We're ready?
Not quite. Now you're live.
Okay, let's call to order the city council regular meeting for June 8th, 2021. Before the roll call, the city attorney has an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that Governor Newsom's executive orders pertaining to the Brown Act are currently still in effect and they allow public meetings like this one to be held by teleconference to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. I'd ask the clerk to conduct roll call at this time and ask the mayor to recognize me afterward to confirm certain matters.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Rose.
Yeah.
Councilmember Zafar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
And Mayor Hudson.
Here. We recognize the city attorney.
Thank you. And based on the responses to roll call, please let the record reflect that all council members can hear the proceedings clearly. And if there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each council member believes, based on facial voice recognition or otherwise, that persons representing themselves to be council members are in fact council members.
Yes.
And seeing hearing no objection, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and remind you all that all votes must be taken by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda, city clerk?
There are no changes or additions to speak.
Hey. Item 3.2, if you wish to speak under public comment or regarding an item, I'm sorry, or regarding an agenda item, please click the raise your hand button on your computer or star nine on your telephone to request to speak when public comment has been taken on the agenda item. You will then be unmuted when it's your turn to make your comments for up to three minutes. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Board, committee, and commission meetings, a complete list of upcoming meetings, may be found on the city website at www.sanramon.ca.gov. Subscription service is available at the link for automatic meeting notification. Contact the city clerk with questions, 973-2539. Public comment is now open. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, special presentations, items under section six of tonight's agenda, that would be 6.1, 6.2, or 6.3, and items that are not on the agenda. And oh, good, we're gonna have three speakers. If you wish to speak under public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial nine, star nine on your telephone. There's your turn to talk and call upon a name if provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person. I see that we have three people that wish to speak. Let's start with them tonight. The first person is call-in user number one. Can we get her in here?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor Hudson and councilmembers. I was late as usual. When you have special meeting, it starts really early. So sometimes the public cannot make it on time. I ask that you will please consider moving public comment towards the end of special meetings instead of, you know, making us miss it and then we are not allowed to speak anymore. I sat through the team interviews for the vice chair. I have two comments. Number one, today is the second day of summer and I'm really surprised that you are interviewing teens. These are kids who are still under age 18. I really would appreciate it if you guys would consider keeping any teen council or teen volunteer position, related interviews, not during breaks, not during summer break, not during winter break, because these are kids and they deserve to have a summer break. And also, I noticed that all of the candidates were girls. So I would like you to please consider, you know, promoting or doing more, you know, solicitation in our boys community, in the boy teen community, to achieve the equity agenda that we've been talking. Also, I noticed that we have another flagpole that went up around the city hall. And I remember during, before the pandemic, the policy was that, you know, the city of San Ramon will only observe federal and state and city flags in our city premise. And because, you know, by favoring any specific activist group, well, basically invite more activist groups into our city. I am really sorry that you guys, you know, violated your own commitment on that. And that, you know, once you open up a, you know, can of worms, expect more worms to crawl into the can. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Breed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Chris Breed and I've been participating in the school strike for climate every Friday for 13 weeks. And in those 13 weeks, it's become well-known that our state has fallen into another historic drought. Historic snowpack levels are at 0%. Historic reservoir levels are at 37%. And vegetation dryness are at a literal all-time high for this time of year. This should scare you. It scares me because I know that this means our state will once again burn down this year. California wildfires have already eliminated 10% of the global sequoia population. They've killed more than 100 Californians in the past four years. And they've caused billions of dollars in damages that does not include the health damages caused by toxic wildfire smoke that turned our sky orange last year. That is a day I hope we don't forget because it is a glimpse into our future. So once again, I'm calling on the San Ramon City Council to pass a climate emergency resolution and to establish a climate action commission to elevate climate action to the priority level that the crisis demands because it's clear that we can't wait any longer to take urgent decisive action. Thank you.
Joyce Carr.
I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I already started talking and I could see there was.
It was great. Go ahead, Joyce.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know, the citizens here in San Ramon, and I'm sure most of you know that this week is superhero week honoring the frontline workers at the Nob Hill supermarket. They've worked so hard during this COVID virus and served us all and supplied us with everything that we need and for our food and other needs. And so I hope you'll get a chance to go buy. I hope everybody will get a chance to go buy this week and shop and and see the store if you have not been in there. It's a wonderful store. And also on Saturday at 5 o'clock, there will be a special presentation and Mayor Hudson will be there to do the presenting. So I just wanted you all to know about that. Again, that is Saturday, 5:00 PM at Nob Hill. Thank you.
Sue Bach.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Yes, you announced my name is Sue Bach. I have lived and worked in San Ramon for over 20 years. And I would like to draw your attention to the issue of our continuing climate crisis. We have had an unprecedented amount of no rain in this area, and that has created a, an issue with dry land like Chris was talking about earlier. I was hiking today and I, I just cannot believe how dry the the grasses are in Los Trumpus, which creates a whole new issue with a fire starting very easily. So because I live in San Ramon, I want it to be exemplary for the rest of the state, the county, and other cities for it to be an example. And despite the fact that we have had a pandemic, our air quality has gotten worse here in California. And then the last time I spoke, I talked about banning, declaring a banning of styrofoam and plastic. 10 out of 20 cities or unincorporated of Contra Costa County have banned styrofoam. And San Ramon isn't one of them. And that's a, that's a pretty sad fact. Now, the consequences for not fixing or being elevated to a position where we can make a difference in our city and our state is that it's going to create a circular feed loop of higher greenhouse gases with this worsened air quality and a drier climate. And with the styrofoam and plastic bags, businesses will continue to support products that devastate our environment. So I am here today to ask you to do the right thing and declare climate emergency, but also to go beyond that and devote an entire agenda to this climate emergency. Thank you for your time and consideration of my request.
Jirak, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did pronounce my name very well. Thanks, though. And I also wanted to continue on what Chris and Sue all talked about. We all see the evidence of the climate change and we really want to put that in the agenda of the city. Have city council set up a board where we can basically monitor the daily activities and put climate emergency in the agenda. Apart from that, I also looked into the last 2011 climate plan. I see that most of the things are not implemented. And that was something very dissatisfying where, where we had told like by 2020, we'll have a lot of electric vehicles in the city, but nothing has happened. So we want to keep it as as an climate emergency and somebody watching it carefully that it's been implemented as well, not just talking about it. That should be all from my end.
Okay, do we have any written comments?
I did not receive any written comments for public comment.
Okay, public comment is closed. While we encourage your comments, unfortunately, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. They do not, we, they do take them, that's us, very seriously. However, if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. Next item on the agenda, five, that's consent calendar, 5-1 through 5-9 consent calendar items. Consider routine in nature, act upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input may request by email to the city clerk. Has anyone requested a pull an item from the consent calendar? City clerk?
There were no requests from the public, no.
Okay, is there anyone from the council that is requesting to pull one?
I can move.
Like, like, Member Armstrong, did you want to pull one?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 5.9 just so we can get better visibility, I think, for the public and for myself on the, the proposed FY 2122 statement of investment policy.
Okay, and then you'll be making the motion on 5-1 through 5-8 members. So far, I think you were starting to. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent color items 5-1 through 5-8. Member Perkins?
I'll second 5-1 through 5-8.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Armstrong.
Yes.
Councilmember Rose.
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Hudson?
Yes, I think that's 5-0. So we will get 5.9 and item seven. Next, the highlight of the evening, this is a special presentation. Comments for this section may be taken during public comment. We didn't have any. Tonight, we are 6.1 proclamation honoring Eva Phelps upon her retirement, and there have been an introduction by our city manager, Joe Gordon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good after, or I should say, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Eva is here. I hope she actually turns her camera on. That would be helpful.
Camera shy.
Yeah, well, it is. See that on the agenda.
Oh, you missed that, huh? Well, it's kind of with mixed emotions from my part, both happiness and sadness. I'd like to congratulate Eva on her retirement. She actually did retire a few months ago, but graciously agreed to stay on to get us through this budget and get our new administrative services director up and running and familiarized with the operations here in the city. And so Eva, as most of you are aware, most of the council and all staff, she's, she's a, was our longest tenured employee here at in San Ramon. She's been a pillar in San Ramon and she's literally been a part of the, the city fabric for well over 30 years, right? What is it, 34 years now, Eva?
34.
34 years. And so she's seen this city grow. I won't do the math. That's Eva's job. But what, what, when did you start? It would be.
Young, very young.
1980 something, I suppose. Yes, so almost the entire time during the, while the city was young and growing and Eva's worked her way up through the organization to finish off being the administrative services director. And it's been a, she's gone through multiple city managers. I'm not sure if she's probably, I don't know whether I should be happy or sad she's leaving on my watch, but we'll, we'll have to see that. But she was instrumental in helping me when I started as a city manager about five years ago and and she's been leading the, kind of the financial strategy of the city for years. And so you can credit Eva for much of the stability the city's had over, over the years. And so without further ado, I just, we're gonna miss her. All the department heads and the city staff are gonna miss her and we're proud to have this proclamation that the mayor's going to, to read for Eva. And we really do want to wish her the best of luck in the next chapter in her retirement.
Go on a cruise, Eva. Have a good time. Don't miss us. In the meantime, I have a proclamation of the city council, the city of San Ramon recognizing Eva Phelps for 35 years of dedicated service to the city of San Ramon. Whereas Eva Phelps was hired by the city of San Ramon on August 20th, 1986 as an account clerk in the administrative service department. And over the years, she was promoted through the ranks. On March 12th, 1990, Eva was promoted to senior account clerk. On December 23rd, 1996, she was promoted to office specialist, then to the position of accountant on August 16th, 1999. Eva was promoted to division manager of finance services in 2001. Then to director of administrative services in 2011. And she worked in this capacity until her retirement date of December 31st, 2020. And whereas the administrative service department is responsible for general administrative support functions, Eva oversaw the following divisions: finance, information technology, human resources. Major accomplishments under Eva's guidance include the implementation of CalCard, governmental accounting standards board 44, the statistical section, commerce bank control pay advance revenue share program. That's gonna make one heck of a, what, what the CBCP? You did get out at the right time. ID card system with facility security access. Govinvest software, the transfer of payroll records to Laserfish, CalOps, the applicant tracking system, participation in the implementation of the new automatic time sheet and time management system, and two HRIS systems, HDE and Tyler Munis. And whereas during Eva's 35 years as a city employee, she has significantly impacted the growth and success of this city. Eva was responsible for the overall preparation of the city's managers, the city managers' operating budget and ensuring the city maintains its financial stability. Eva coordinated the refunding of the 1994 tax allocation bond issue, prepared the city first comprehensive annual financial report, which brought the city to the highest standards of governmental financial reporting. The city was presented the certificate of award for outstanding financial reporting in 2005 and certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by GFOA. I, you know, I, I looked at this earlier and for the life of me, I've said this so many times, I forgot what that means. So you're gonna have to explain that when we're through. For 16 consecutive years, that's 2004 through 2019. Now, whereas Eva's achievements are to be lauded and also include contracting with CalPERS for medical insurance, the development of several policies and procedures, participation on the municipal pooling authority board of directors as the city's risk manager. Eva served on the city's COVID rapid response team and prepared and reported coronavirus relief funds to State Department of Finance. And whereas Eva has made a lasting and immeasurable impact on the quality of life for those who live, work, and play in San Ramon through her talent, skills, motivation, dedication, worth ethic, commitment to excellence, and positive attitude. Whereas under Eva's leadership, the administrative service department has achieved the goals and priorities established by the city council. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council does hereby thank and congratulate Eva Phelps on her retirement and for her contribution of 35 years to the city and for her distinguished career as an exemplary public servant. Signed, Junie. Thank you, Eva. We're gonna miss you. But do not come back at public com, no, just kidding. Come back anytime and please, I have more than a few words to say.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. I have, I love this city and I'm glad I'm a part of it. I'm glad I'm a citizen. And it's just been a pleasure working with everyone, the council. Thank you for believing in me and trusting in me and my city manager, who I just love to pieces, has just been the greatest boss I've had. I mean, I've had some great ones. You know, I give credit to the other city managers, but he's the best. All the management team, we've had just such a great time. My staff, if it wasn't for them, they work so hard and they're so dedicated. My managers, Candace Daniels, Sarah Monastis, and Rick Maria. They are all great and I just appreciate everyone for all that you have done and I just, I'm gonna be by the sidelines, just rooting everyone on. And I'm, I'm just so thankful that I've been able to be a part of this great city and leave it in a good place. And also, you guys have a good replacement. Kelly Sessions, I've been able to have the pleasure of working with him for the last almost two months and I, I kind of said to him, you know, if I was still here, we would be a great team to work together. So, because we hit it off really well. So I know he will be a good addition to the city of San Ramon. So thank you all for everything. I love you all.
Thank you, Eva. And before we get to something, I just want to tell the attendees that the person speaking to our presentations, it was done on item four. We won't be opening up to this. There are no written comments, are there, city clerk, by any chance? Just double checking. Eva, two things. First of all, I'm trying to remember who your, who your first city man, was it Byron the first time? Was it, I know it was before her. Yeah, Robinson?
And then her, Monice. And.
Byron.
Yeah, Byron. And then Greg Rogers. He was my, he was the actually admin services director when I was the finance manager. So when he got promoted, I went right with him. Believe in me too. So he was a great guy too. So he was my mentor.
I knew it. She forgot what it meant too. GFPA.
Oh, GFPA. Yeah, we, we use that. That's the Government Finance Officers Association.
Okay. Scott, you're unmuted first.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much for your years of service. Eva, did you have any idea when you first stepped in in 1986 as a, as a clerk that you'd go out as the admin services director? You know, from a town of, at that time, we were probably just a little, we were probably less than 30,000 at that time. Maybe closer to 20,000. So do you have any idea that you'd, you'd go out as the director?
No, I didn't think I would be around for a long time. Because, you know, I was only, well, I was 23 at the time.
Oh, now we can count, right?
I was young. I wasn't even thinking about retirement or just staying on. And this has been the best thing that has ever happened to me.
Well, you made a great decision coming here and, and it certainly worked out great for the city. And, and thank you so much. You know, our finances are rock solid because of you and Greg and others and Candace and all. It, it's rock solid. And there are other cities, hundreds of other cities that envy us. I mean, we're in that 5% that has a triple A rating. And so the other 95% wish they were where we are. And we are where we are because of you and Greg and Candace and you know, a lot of other people, but you kind of led the way and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Sabina.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Eva. The three years that I've been here now, I've been so impressed with how well you've managed our budget. Unlimited revenue, honestly, when I compare us to other cities that are smaller than us and have more money than us and what you've been able to achieve in manage our budget, I really, really appreciate it, you know, just coming on, educating me and answering all the questions and now being on the finance committee, really getting a deeper dive from you on some of the things. So just want to say thank you. For historical reasons, do you remember what our first budget was? How much was it?
No, I don't remember. It's small.
Just want to say thank you so much. Really appreciate everything you're doing for me as a resident and as a council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very well stated. Sridhar.
Congratulations, Eva, on your retirement. Thank you very much for all your great services for 35 years. That's amazing. You know, one thing I strongly believe that is the finance, strong finance is a key foundation for our city. As we really appreciate your role, especially during this year COVID-19 unprecedented times, but still you put us strong there. So thank you very much for all your work. And thanks for spending your time with me, teaching me some of the basics on our budgets. I really appreciate that. And for sure, we'll miss you. Wish you all the best with your retirement. I hope you enjoy your retirement. Once again, thank you for all your great services for 35 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark?
Well, likewise, I'd like to congratulate you on, on your career and your service to the city of San Ramon. You've done a great job in helping me get on board. I know you did a great job getting Kelly Sessions on board and you've done a super job training up your staff and developing them and just that seamless transition. You've touched all the parts of the, the administrative services world and, and so you know what you're talking about. You're an expert. And so thank you for all that you've done, for leading us through this year's budget process and, and sticking around to, to help us through that. And again, just congratulations and I wish you the best of luck and I know we'll be seeing you around.
Thank you. And before the city manager might want to add the last word on this, I would just like to say, Eva, I can't thank you enough for taking the calls from a certain editor whenever, never mind. Last word goes to the city manager. If you got anything more to add before we move on on this.
Just.
On that cruise.
Just shortly, I constantly say this, and I know the wisdom of the council agrees is you look around San Ramon and you look at the finances, you look at the parks, you look at the entire city and. you, you look around San Ramon and you look at the finances, you look at the parks, you look at, uh, the entire city and, um, we strive to do it right. We don't always do it right, but I think we do it right most of the time. You just don't get a city like this by accident. You really don't. It takes, uh, wise leadership, not only from the council, but from, um, people like Eva Phelps and, and I can't stress this enough that she spent, uh, her, her entire career here. So she's known every aspect of this city inside and out. And, um, that's, that's something that we've depended on for, uh, for this entire time. And she's also offered to let me keep her phone number so I can call her like three times a week, but.
What were you thinking, Eva?
Three. I said, what? Maybe once.
On behalf of the entire city staff, the department heads, um, we wish you the very best life has to offer, uh, in the next chapter of your life, Eva.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Okay, we are going to move on. We had two attendees that wanted to speak. The time to speak on these, uh, items under six point one, six point two and six point three was during public comment, item four. We will now move on to item six point two, which is, where did I go with this? A proclamation declaring June twenty twenty one as LGBTQ plus pride month. Uh, and I have a presentation for Lisa Levy. Is she here?
Uh, she is actually not logged in, no.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read it anyway, if that's okay. Lisa, if you're listening or you wanna get it afterwards, we will have it. And this is a proclamation of the city council, the city of San Ramon, declaring June twenty twenty one as LGBTQ plus pride month. Whereas the city of San Ramon is, is committed to making San Ramon a place where everyone is welcome. And whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles, including that every person has been created equal, that all have rights to their life, liberty and pursuit of happiness, and that all shall be afforded the full recognition and protections of the law. And whereas the city of San Ramon recognizes the importance of equality and freedom and is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas the city of San Ramon is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, sexual orientation and gender identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of the city of San Ramon. Whereas many residents, students, employees and business owners within San Ramon who contribute to the enrichment of the city and are part of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ plus community and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of San Ramon does hereby proclaim June as LGBTQ plus pride month annually in San Ramon and encourages residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty. So Lisa, if you're listening, we have a proclamation for you, uh, and, uh, thank you very much for bringing this up to us last year. We had a diversity group look at this for a long time and we just continue to try and make it better. Any comments from the council before we move on? And we have, well, we're not taking any attendees. We've already had that. Sridhar?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Hudson. Uh, June is a pride month, a time dedicated to uplifting LGBTQ plus voices, celebrating diversity and culture and supporting the fundamental human rights. So I strongly believe that, uh, human rights are basic rights that belong to all of us. And I think it is a great opportunity for us to celebrate this month about the human rights and all our, uh, freedom that we are enjoying. And, um, I would like to take this moment to thank Mayor Hudson and my fellow council members for your support in approving our flag pole and also for flying the pride flag. Uh, it is, uh, really very impressive how our, uh, city manager Joe Garten and assistant manager Steven Spodasty work with our publics department, public works department and making this happen. Uh, it's, uh, you know, we had very short time period, but they could able to get the flag pole and, uh, make, uh, the pride flag fly on our Alcoa and Bollinger Canyon intersection. Uh, when I drive there and I see, I feel really proud about our city. Uh, so thank you once again for, uh, allowing us to share our community sentiments and feelings, support of LGBTQ plus community in San Ramon. Thank you.
Scott.
Well, Sridhar said pretty much what I was gonna say. I'm, I'm really grateful that we got that flag pole up and the flag is flying there at the corner of Alcosta and Bollinger and, uh, um, we will have that up there, uh, this year and we'll have the pride flag up next year, I hope. And, and going on into the future. So we also have a, uh, a display on our marquee as well. So, uh, I think the San Ramon, uh, uh, leadership here is, is doing their part to promote this on our, um, official flag pole at the corner and at the marquee. And so glad to see it's there.
Thank you. Sabina.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the council and thank you mayor for the proclamation. Uh, we truly stand by, um, our statement that everyone's welcome in San Ramon and this is truly makes everyone feel welcome. I remember last year, uh, we had two hundred and fifty people or letters that came in and people spoke about this. Um, and the fact that nobody's here means everybody's comfortable now with the council and the decisions we're making uh, to represent our residents. So this is, you know, again, a big statement. Uh, and the flag's been looking beautiful. And so I'm very, very proud to be a resident of San Ramon as well, where we truly appreciate and proclaim diversity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we can add Phil alone, Bill Clarkson. This diversity group, I, I know, uh, and you mentioned Stephen Spodasky on this also. Uh, I was really upset. I thought they was moving too slow because this council took a very strong position that we were going to do this more than what we were asked to do. Um, the idea to just run up the flag on the third flag pole when it, to me, was not what we were trying to do. Um, but then we came together and said, no, we'll do it for the rest of the month. And now let's go out and find out what's best for our residents. Uh, that flag pole to me was one of the best. I, I thought Stephen came up with some great ideas and I don't think we're through yet with, uh, what's in our medians, uh, what we've been doing with, uh, uh, banners or the possibility of it. Uh, this is gonna continue until we're, you know, satisfied as a community that we've done all we can do. Uh, the flag to me is a great symbol. It's not just for LGBTQ. They were the ones that brought it forward. There are others that are looking, uh, that may make, uh, uh, you know, a statement, they're welcome here or something that, uh, we're doing within the city that, uh, brings a lot of pride to us and we'll be working on that also. But in any case, uh, I want particularly to thank staff for following up on this. Uh, we'll stay with the, um, uh, the policies, uh, until we feel we've got it right. And I think we have done that at this point and, you know, I'm trying to draw this out to see if Lisa's coming on, but she's not. So thank you for Lisa for staying with this with us and we will move on to item six point.
Wait, I think council member Mark had his hand up.
Oh, Mark, you'd want to speak twice, huh?
Well, I, I think it's all been said and, uh, I think the resolution, uh, speaks for itself. And so, uh, thank you, uh, for, for bringing us to our attention. And, uh, our city truly is a place where everyone is welcome and we definitely value, uh, everyone's participation and everyone's input. Thank you.
And I don't know if I said this strong enough, the answer from the diversity group that that marquee is an important statement. Uh, not just a, you know, something we could do and, and not, to me, that really looking into it for a year and then coming up with the marquee is a very important statement in itself. If we'd only done the marquee, it is as much credit as if we'd done the flag and then to go and do the flag on top of that. I'm really proud of where this is, this has ended up. Anyway, we will move on to six point three. This is East Bay Municipal Utility District Annual Update. John Coleman, are you here? I swear you have got to be memorizing this thing by now. This has gotta be the fourth time I've seen it. We have, uh, Brian Bornstein's gonna introduce him, I believe. Brian here.
Yeah, that's correct. Mayor Hudson, uh, city council, good evening. Uh, yeah, tonight, uh, we're gonna provide from East Bay Mud, a water supply and drought update. Uh, East Bay Mud does serve about two thirds of the city. Uh, it includes Gale One, a Dordie Valley. Uh, the other part of Dordie Valley serviced by DSRSD. Uh, Director Coleman represents Ward Two. Uh, that's basically what district he has that includes San Ramon and it runs up north, uh, all the way up to, uh, Lafayette, Walnut Creek and Pleasant Hill. John Coleman has been on the East Bay Mud Board of Directors since nineteen ninety. Over thirty years experience, so I assume he really knows his H two O. He's a good one to provide the update. Uh, so anyway, I will turn it over to him. Uh, this is his first virtual meeting for San Ramon. Uh, we did not have a meeting last year due to the pandemic. Typically, we do like, uh, East Bay Mud and DSRSD to provide uh, yearly updates to you guys on water supply and especially during conditions of drought. Uh, so with that, we also have DSRSD, uh, following suit at the next council meeting. They will provide their updates. So with that said, I will turn it over to Director Coleman if he is here. Yes.
I'm here.
Hi stranger, you got the floor.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Hudson and Brian and council members. I appreciate that. I don't know who's gonna be moving the, the deck forward for me. I'm not. Ah, there Christina is. So yes, I've done this presentation a few times, actually. This is the third time this week and Thursday's the first time it's, I actually have an in-person presentation since the pandemic began. So looking forward to that. East Bay matter, water supply. I wanna talk about water supply, budget and infrastructure. Uh, Brian pretty much introduced me in terms of what we're, what we're about. And, um, so why don't just go to the next slide? So we don't, we have limited time. I'll be real quick. Ninety percent of our water comes from the Sierra Nevada mountains, uh, the snowpack flows into Party Reservoir. Then it goes across aqueducts, ninety miles from a party reservoir, right below Party into, uh, Walnut Creek near Larky Park, where it's treated and then it's distributed throughout our system. And, um, it's an old system. In fact, some of our system, our district is ninety eight years old and our, some of our systems a hundred and fifty years old. So we have a lot of aged stuff in our system. We can go to the next slide. That'd be great. Um, so our watershed, where we collect our water. If you're familiar with Bear Valley Ski Resort near at the top and you look north and if you're Kirkwood and you look south, that is where the McCullum River watershed is and that all flows into Party Reservoir. And again, it flows down into Walnut Creek. You also see a dark line, uh, called the Freeport Regional Water Facility. Uh, we built that with Sacramento County and that takes water when we need it off the Sacramento River, right below the American River and brings it into our aqueduct system that then flows into, uh, our service area as it is. And, uh, next slide. Um, if we can, we serve one point four million people. We have five local reservoirs like Breone's, Upper San Leandro and, uh, reservoirs like that where we store water. And we do, in some cases, that's rainwater mixed with water we bring down from Party, put in there. And some of those reservoirs we then, uh, tap into in fall and late fall, uh, to be able to feed. That goes usually into the Alameda County portion of the district. Your water, one hundred percent is coming from Party Reservoir, uh, as is the entire San Ramon Valley. We have six treatment plants and a lot of miles of pipes in pressure zones and reservoirs. And we, we don't do wastewater here. That's on the other side of the hill. So I would go on to the next slide and we can delve into it. East Bay Mud. So for every about one cent per gallon of water, it is about one cent of the cost they have the water delivered to you. And, um, again, ninety percent of our water comes from the McCullum River watershed and fifty million gallons of wastewater retrieved. We have forty two hundred miles of pipeline that we are maintained through the system and fifty seven thousand acres of watershed and we serve about a hundred fifty million gallons of water a day. Next slide please. So that pipeline, basically it's Wrigley filled the Oaklandase and back to Wrigley or the other way Oaklandase to Wrigley and back to Oakland. That is what we have required to maintain and we do work on maintaining. And that's actually a big part of our, uh, budget that I'll go into in a minute. But that is our obligation is to maintain that pipeline. Uh, next slide please. We are not in nine to five operation or twenty four seven. Uh, we have crews that are on call and ready to respond as soon as possible. And if there's a leak, and I know Vice Mayor Perkins is here, I get a text or an email from him when the one is in San Ramon. And, uh, so my job is when I get that from Scott, I call the general manager and say, we got a leak in San Ramon. We gotta get on it. And our crews are pretty responsive to that. The fact is, especially in a time of a drought, nobody, we don't wanna see water leaking out of any pipe, but in a time of a drought, it's really hard to explain to the public that we are currently, um, uh, working on that system. But again, some of those pipes are over, well over one hundred years old that we're maintaining. And we have the crews on hand to be able to do that work at all times. Uh, next slide please. So we're working on a lot of critical improvements, the projects that are completed, uh, the top right-hand corners, the render, uh, treatment plant and pumping plants, uh, reservoirs, aqueducts. To put it in perspective, the aqueducts from McCullum, uh, river, I mean from Party, one is large enough to drive a VW bug through. That's how much water is coming down and, um, we're also upgrading some of our neighborhood reservoirs. In some cases, we've had reservoirs that were built on the hills, uh, that you can often sometimes see that were built fifty some odd years ago. They're not in compliance to meet with current ocean needs. But the biggest concern is there's, they're holding too much water. And when the water sits in a reservoir for too long, it develops a taste. And then we have people who complain about the water quality and the taste of the reservoirs. And their demand has dropped so much that in some cases, these reservoirs are just way too big. So when they're way too big and they need to be upgraded to meet health and safety concerns, we are now looking at bringing those down and making them smaller or removing, uh, some altogether in order to make sure that we have the ability to do that, to move forward. Next slide please. So in our area, uh, you know, we have the Acorn Reservoir down in the area, the scenic east reservoir, the Derby Reservoir. And then the yellow zone is my ward. So that gives you an idea of the amount of projects that are actually out going on in Ward Two. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to maintain our system because we know it's aged. We know that there'll be an earthquake at some point in time. And if we can make sure that we seismically upgraded our facilities uh, to as much as possible to meet the standards of today for maximum credible earthquake is seven point five, which is anticipated. That means that when that earthquake happens, our chance of going offline is lessened that much. And that means we can make sure we can deliver enough adequate water into our area. Uh, next slide please. Um, the San Ramon recycled water program is something I'm very proud of, uh, uh, working with, uh, people from DSRSD back in the nineteen nineties. We established DIRWA and it's Joint Powers Authority, which I'm on. And we've been able to put over three hundred million gallons of recycled water into the Danville, San Ramon area. We've just connected a Bishop Ranch on phase two. Our golf courses are being connected to recycled water and, um, really when you get right down to it, it's wrong to be putting treated wastewater, uh, into the bay in a waterway when it can be reused and, um, but our biggest problem with our recycled water project in San Ramon Valley for DIRWA is at times we don't have enough commodity, literally. It's, it's, there's not enough waste, treated, treated wastewater. So we're entered into an agreement with Conacosta Central SAM and the, for the product, I guess they can call the product for what they don't need until they need to use it. We have, they have the first right of refusal. We'll take it, take it and treat it and, and at DSRSD. And then that's be put to our distrib- distribution system. So we're looking also how we can increase storage and other non-potable water sources because the demand is extremely high for recycled water, as it should be. And, uh, it's benefited the San Ramon Valley. Uh, and I'd like to see it grow more if we add more of the commodity put in the pipes. Uh, next slide please. So we have just a little over two thousand employees of which you can see on the screen what they're, what they're involved in. And again, the bulk of our work is water service and that's sick, almost two thirds of our employees are involved with, uh, doing the water service and, uh, making sure that the water is safe from the reservoir to your tap. And there's a lot of regulatory requirements that go into that and a lot of effort goes into that as well. And, um, so if we can go to the next slide. And, um, so if we can go to the next slide. Our water supply, let's go to the next one. We're in a drought, folks. In our service area, we had the driest year of record in ninety-eight years in our service area. Generally, we get about twenty-eight inches of rainfall in our area. This year, we did just a little over eight inches of rainfall. Where we get our water from, that ninety percent out of the McCullum River watershed, um, normally that's about sixty inches of rainfall or precip. This year it's in the thirties, so they are fifty-two percent of average. Uh, so we are in a drought. We don't know when we're going to come out of a drought. Um, climate change is having an impact, obviously, on how we're gonna get, when and we're gonna get precipitation. Ironically, I do work with the NOAA in my other life and with the scientists from NOAA from Colorado. And we are gonna have some very wet years. But we don't know when they are, when the atmospheric rivers come through. This year, we had three atmospheric rivers come into the central Sierras, normally at eight to twelve. And so that really had an impact. The other thing is it's gonna be more rain than snow, which is gonna present other problems down the road because when the rain comes in torrents through an atmospheric river, it spills and it's gotta go someplace. So it goes down the river and out. There's no, not any really, any real way to capture it. This was snow in a normal cycle, it melts over a period of time and then it goes into our system. But this year, when we were about six weeks ago, we were expecting to get about seventy-five thousand acre feet of water out of our, uh, watershed. Today, there's not a drop of snow in our watershed. And because it was so dry, the ground and the weather got so warm with the winds, uh, we lost seventy-five thousand acre feet of water that we would have gotten into our system otherwise. Uh, next slide please. So this shows where our storage is. The black line indicates normally where it stands and we always measure our storage at the end of September. And with that, we, uh, are able to make some determinations. At our board meeting today, we're expecting to be at four hundred and twenty-five thousand acre feet of storage at the end of September. And at one point, we were hoping it'd be around four seventy. And then as we started seeing the drops and runoff, we realized that we're actually going to a much lower level of storage capability. Um, next slide please. So we've asked our customers, and in our budget today, it was approved, keeping it the same way, we're asking it for a ten percent voluntary cutback. I gotta give a lot of credit to our staff. In the past, when we did cutbacks, we'd go back to a previous drought and say, okay, this is what your water usage is, you need to cut back ten percent. Well, we all know we've been in a pandemic mode for the last year plus, year and a half. And a lot of people have been working from home, going to, and rather than going to school, they're at home. So we're asking a ten percent cutback from the year twenty twenty usage from single-family homes. We was realizing that that usage is higher, it's about six point six percent higher than it would be normally. And as a result, we're asking that it be cut back from the ten, ten percent from twenty twenty, not from twenty thirteen. And I, again, that was staff's idea and they did a great job with, uh, coming up with that as an idea. Um, in our budget today, we did approve, uh, we're not doing any drought surcharge. And, um, again, we're at ten percent voluntary, next slide please. So what we've asked for, we have a Central Valley Project contract. Initially, we were hoping to get seventy-five thousand there about acre feet, then fifty thousand. Now we're being told that our current allocation is twenty-five thousand acre feet of water, which would run about a hundred and twenty-seven dollars an acre foot to purchase. And we would take it again out of our Freeport facility on the Sacramento River. And, uh, we would need to take it, pump it and then treat it and bring it into our system. The cost of twelve point five million dollars. We have a, um, rate stabilization fund which has over ninety million dollars in it. And so that is paying for the twelve point five million dollars. It's not gonna be going on to the ratepayers. That fund was established for purposes like this. So this year, you're not gonna see, and hopefully not next year for in a wet year, but this year, there's gonna be no increase in the, um, your rates to help pay for surcharge for water. Uh, next slide please. So we have ways to help you fight the drought as much as possible. We have webinars, series that we've been doing very successfully. Some homes now have on their phones, they can get their, uh, water usage. What's really important on these is if you are, notice a spike or we notice a spike, we'll contact you because you may have a leak and not know it. And that leak can be then fixed. And rather than having that leak go, because we bill every two months, going for fifty-some-odd days, which could be a lot of money, uh, you can help really curtail the usage by fixing that leak much sooner than possible. So we're trying to be very aggressive with our water conservation. We know that there'll be a lot of media outreach. And, um, so this is all good, what we're trying to do. And again, our staff has been very creative on how we can do more. We have rebate programs for single-family homeowners, for businesses, for local government, HOAs. Go on, go to our website and see if you can get a grant or an apply for that. And we can help pay for it and then you can reduce the amount of water that you'd be using otherwise. Uh, next slide please. Budgets and rates, so we did approve our budgets and rates today. So about sixty-four percent is to maintain our investments in aging infrastructure. So really, when you get right down to it, it is, um, uh, forty-two percent for capital improvements and about twenty-two percent for debt service, which is paying on what we've been doing in order to do the upgrades that we need to do. We're also planning for long-term financial stability. And we're reducing the amount of our debt service by virtue of paying more as you go, is I guess the best way to describe it. And that, even though we have the highest rating you can get from bond agencies, uh, we're trying to move in the direction of paying more as you go. And again, when you add that debt service with the capital investment, sixty-four percent of our budget that we approved today was for capital improvements. And next slide please. And I think that's what, oh, and these are the, some of our things are working in aging infrastructure, I talked about that. Pandemic recovery, we're trying to deal with that. Seismic hazards, we were the first, uh, water wastewater agency in the United States after the Loma Parade earthquake to spend money on our seismic improvement program. And we have rising costs and to put it in perspective of ninety-three percent of our water is a fixed cost. We could sell a hundred million gallons or five hundred million gallons a day. Ninety-three percent of those costs are fixed. The only real variable is energy and chemicals when you get right down to it. And so ironically, the price of energy is going up as well as chemicals because a lot of chemicals are made from petroleum-based products and those are going up. Regulatory compliance, when the government, state or federal government says you need to do this, we have to do it when they say we have to do it. They usually don't give us any money to do that and that means that we're having to do that through our rates. And then climate change, climate change is here, it's real. We're trying to address it and we're trying to be very proactive. And our goals by the year twenty forty, I think it is, to be, uh, carbon neutral as an, as an agency. Uh, moving forward, next slide please. So this is where our dollars, each dollar goes, again, fifty-six for infrastructure improvements, twenty for water service, seven percent for admin, three percent for natural resource and two percent, two dollars, two cents for regulatory compliance. Um, it's a complex system, it's an old system and it's a system. We don't want it to be held together by Band-Aids and hope and prayers, but we're really trying to make sure that we minimize the amount of damage that we have. We know during a drought, as the ground contracts from the dryness, more pipes are gonna break. That's just, that happens every drought. So what we're trying to do is get out there and do seismic, uh, we're doing, we can measure the strength of the pipe by sound, waves, and if we determine that that pipe is potentially going to break, then it moves up on our list of what we need to do and that's what, um, we'll fix it now because it's double the cost to fix a broken pipe versus go in and do a pipe before it breaks. Next slide please. So our budget was two point two five billion for a two-year budget. And again, this gives you a breakdown of where it's, uh, where the money is going and how it's being used. And, um, what, I guess next slide probably tells me that I should know it offhand, I've done this enough, next slide. What we approved today was a four percent rate increase for this year and next year. CPI is expected to be about three percent, um, this year. Initially, staff came to us at a higher, uh, percent rate increase and the board in its entirety said, that's way too high. Too many people are living on the margins right now. People are uncertain, they're fearful of what may happen, not knowing with the pandemic. It's gotta come down. We, in our two budget, we only ended up over a two-year period hiring one more person out of our total employee group. So it's not that we're rich, we were adding a bunch of employees. One employee was hired, is gonna be hired in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Um, and our big thing is making sure we're continuing our investments on our aging infrastructure and planning for long-term, uh, financial stability. Next slide please. This gives you an idea of the water bill. Um, you're not gonna be in most cases the low use, you're in the San Ramon Valley, you're probably between the eight to twenty-four, uh, CCF. And each CCF is, uh, you, one unit or seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. This gives you an idea of what, how your water bill's gonna change at a four percent rate increase. And, um, so it's, it's there. We have tiered pricing, which is required by, um, law in California. And, um, so that's what we have, next slide please. This puts us in the pack of where the higher water users, primarily San Ramon Valley, you would see yourself as a green bar. You go down further, it's, it's less. In some cases, it's maybe because it's CBP water or, um, federal water. But those water costs are going up also. And so I suspect that some of the ones who are below us are actually gonna surpass us in the, uh, category of, uh, what a cost for water. Like North Marin, for example, they've already banned all outdoor usage of water. Um, and their cost is going to dramatically as a result of that. And, uh, so that we'll see what happens, uh, next slide please. We again approved our rates today, they go in effect on July one. We had, um, three budget workshops and then our, we did the Prop two eighteen mailing in, uh, April. And we had our public hearing today. And I think we had forty-six people who protested our proposed rate increase out of, um, a couple hundred thousand customers. But it's also created, quite frankly, under Prop two eighteen, difficult to protest. Yeah, that's when the state established that. Uh, next slide please. So here, uh, I'll answer what questions I can. If you need to reach me, my goal is always to return an email and a phone call within twenty-four hours. You see my email address up there, I'll give you my cell phone number. That is five one zero, five nine zero, zero two, three, eight. And with that, I'll be willing to entertain any questions that I can for you.
Questions? I'm seeing them lined up, starting with, uh, the little, uh, leak squealer, Scott Perkins.
John, you know my, my favorite question every year. How many miles of pipe are you gonna fix, you know, not, not brakes, but part of your preventative maintenance, your planned maintenance, how many miles of pipe this year?
About twenty miles.
Twenty miles. Okay, so that's only, uh, two hundred and twenty years then, or two hundred and ten years then to replace the whole.
Oh, so Scott, you gotta remember that we replaced some previously.
Yes, but it, but it, those are already starting to age, right?
Yeah, no, unfortunately, in the San Ramon Valley, they're relatively new.
Right.
Uh, but in other parts of our service area, they are aged. And, um, we're, our goal is to try and minimize amount of breaks. You know, it takes a crew, which is not inexpensive to hire. And with everything you add on to, to do it, we're, we've pretty much stretched, I think, what we can do from financially at this point in time. Otherwise, we'd see much larger rate increases, which the public would not accept in order to do what we need to do.
Uh, you, you know my opinion on that, and that is, uh, a rate a, a rate increase that goes into capital improvements is something I will support. But, and it, it comes down to, if you can't replace the pipes in a timely manner, you know you're fixing leaks. So, um, that, that's my opinion and I, and I think you agree with me, but you gotta get a hold of it.
I wish that we had the ability to just go out and replace as much as we could when it's needed. Um, but I don't think, put it this way, if we had a fifty percent rate increase, I wouldn't be here next year.
Right. But, but you know, it, it comes down to a, a four percent or a five percent increase. And I, and I recognize you, this was a really bad time to, to raise rates. Uh, hopefully there'll come a time when you can, you can do, um, a rate increase that, that's a slight increase over inflation so that you can increase the number of miles per year. Because it wasn't so very long ago, you guys were only doing four and five miles a year. And we were talking about, you know, how many, it was gonna take a thousand years to replace your pipes.
So we've been, we've been incrementally increasing the amount of miles per year.
Right. It, it, that's gotta be, that's gotta be a worthwhile activity is to, um, through either technology or, or pipe replacement to catch it before it breaks.
Well, we've, we've had some pipes that we've actually been able, there's some technology out of Canada, and I don't remember the name of the company. We're on some of the smaller pipes who've actually been able to go in and insert a pipe within a pipe.
Right.
Which is less expensive and less harmful to the roads. We're only making two incisions in the road, not digging the whole road up.
Right. Well, thank, thank you very much for coming out here, John, and, and giving us the update. Um, if you could send me the, uh, daily, you know, uh, on, on an annual basis, I guess, going back twenty, thirty years, I know you guys were delivering more than two hundred million gallons a day at one time. And, and now you're delivering, you say, a hundred and fifty million gallons a day.
Yeah. I, let me, let me, I have it right here.
Oh, great.
In nineteen seventy, when we had one point one million customers, we're doing two hundred and twenty million gallons a day. Nineteen ninety, we had one point two million customers, we're at a hundred and ninety-two million gallons a day. In two thousand, with one point three million customers, we're at two hundred and sixteen million gallons a day. And then I'm looking at this number from twenty fifteen. It's one point four million customers at a hundred and forty-eight point five million gallons a day. So our population's gone up by a third and our usage has gone down by a third.
Mm-hmm. A, a, and I bring that to the attention of people of saying, you know, we can't afford to build more houses because we can't, we can't deliver the water. And I, and I say, well, you know, the drought is playing a role in that. But the system at East Bay Mud is capable of delivering, uh, to a larger audience because our gallons per day per customer has dropped substantially.
Yeah, it's been a significant drop. All the customers have done a, a great job of, uh, conserving water over the years. It's institutionalized, I mean, built to low-flow toilets, irrigation, people don't even think about that now.
Thank, thank you again, John.
Members so far, and then Verose.
John, good to see you on Zoom, it's been a while.
Good to see you, it's been a bit.
Forty-eight hours.
Not for me, probably you, you, Mayor. Um, but yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate, really appreciate the update. Um, you know, I've just been very impressed with all the different water agencies and how this whole system works and, you know, how we're doing recycling. Um, and to follow up on, you know, what you were just talking about with our usage getting lowered, is it, is it also because of, um, newer, better toilets being built and better irrigation systems or?
Yeah.
Um,
Uh, council member, it's a combination, uh, to buy a toilet now, it's an ultra-low flow toilet. Ten, fifteen years ago, that was an option. And the old, you, you toilets used more water, were less expensive. Now you don't have that as a choice, you have to buy the old to low flow irrigation. People will put that in, they've changed the kind of landscaping that they put in their yards as well, which has also made a huge difference. Uh, it's still, although it does grate me, there's that commercially you see on TV, that older couple said we do it every night and they run the dishwasher. Oh my God, yes, they use less water and energy, but you don't need to run it every night still, you know? I, I, I have the tendency, I still wanna fill it up even though I have a dishwasher that uses hardly any water. It's like, you know, it doesn't need to run every night, I'll fill it up and save, you know, a few gallons here and a few gallons there. It adds up. And we all need to be cognizant of how we use water. You know, we're, we don't want to be where it's, um, we don't have, want to have a water police. I just tell people, irrigate your yard reasonably. If it goes off into your gutter, you're using too much water. Use it wisely and use it early morning and three times a week. And your yard should be fine and you'll drop your water usage considerably. And your yard should be fine, and you'll drop your water usage considerably.
Yeah, I've been, any spray mud has been a really um great, you know, um, to work with. There's been several times, for example, I got a really high water bill and I tried to figure out, I called them and they sent me those blue tablets, and they're like, drop this and see if you have a toilet leak, so. Things like that, you know, they came out and they, you know, I had issues with some of my water pipes, and they came out and really told me this, you know, the cause of that. And so, yeah, it's, you know, they've really provided good service, obviously, we have this uh thing in San Ramon now, whether you live in the East Bay Mud Water District, or you live the Dublin San Ramon, and which one is better water, because we're getting our water from uh, you know, the
Well, we all have good water, and we're all working together as partner agencies.
Yeah. Well, you'd have to talk to some of my friends to compete over which water is better. Uh, but yeah, thank you so much, this is always very uh really helpful to understand how a water usage is going, and appreciate you giving us update.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity.
And council member Burrows.
Um, thank you for uh your update, and as council member Jafar mentioned, I live in uh Zone Seven, DSRSD Water Zone. Uh, frankly, I miss my East Bay Mud water when I was living in San Francisco. Uh, so definitely the taste of water, I miss it. Um, okay, so uh coming to my question, uh in the frequently asked question within our community, and also on our uh social media within the community like Nextdoor and all that, is about leaking issues, right? So whenever there's a leak happens, I know you have a mechanism like texting alert textings, and also, if I remember right, you have email. Um, those kind of mechanisms, but like a lot of uh community members don't have knowledge about them. And they are like, I, I feel bad that they end up buying a lot of tools, gadgets, and all that, they're spending money on those things, rather than uh knowing about this basically, now everyone have a smartphone, right, so they can get the text message. So um, I'm thinking, like, is there a way we can uh educate the community or make it more uh aware, like, bring awareness about these available tools and utilities that you already provide them, rather than they go and spending that money on uh off-the-market products?
Well, if you have a smart water meter, and we've been testing some different meters, because we're finding that the shelf life may not be as long as has been forecasted. So if you have a smart water meter, yes, you can use your phone and get a, a message saying that you have uh a leak, or potentially you have a leak. But if you don't have a smart water meter, then that's not gonna happen, and we're testing different ones throughout our service area uh to see which work best and which have the longest shelf life, because it's gonna be again, a big investment when we convert over from our traditional water meter to a smart water meter. So not everybody has a smart water meter, I don't have one where I live in Walnut Creek. Um, and I know they've been doing some testing in Blackhawk, in particular in the San Ramon Valley. It's been where uh some of the testing has been done, and then um we're doing some in the Alameda County side, and up in Oakland and Richmond as well. So not everybody has that kind of meter where they can look on their phone and find out if they have a leak.
Okay, so what are the options they have, like, is the one who don't have uh?
Uh, it's a really good question, I would I guess there are things you can buy in the market, we, we don't ever promote any product on uh, uh, what people should buy, because then we assume a liability if something goes wrong. Um, but if you were to talk to our water conservation people, they may give some ideas as to what's been tested and may what, what way, what, what may work. There's no way, though, that you or myself can go in and change out the meter and put in a smart meter. That, that's not gonna happen, because there's too many problems of cross-connection and contamination, and it has to be done a certain way. And so somebody can't go out and buy a new meter and put that in and take out the old meter, that wouldn't work. So the best thing is to talk to our water conservation department and see what's happening and fi- and finding out where the technology is going and what, how they might be able to capitalize on it. Sorry, it's sort of a vague answer, but it's, it's still developing technology.
Okay, so who is like, uh, when you say water con- conservation department, like, is there any point of contact that we can advise our community members?
Yeah, if you go on our website, www dot ebmud dot com, and then go to, and then there's a bunch of tabs, conservation is one. And then you tap onto that uh tab, that'll take you into all the things that we offer and who to talk to, and ways to contact them.
Sounds good. And also, uh, could you please repeat your phone number?
Sure, five one zero, five nine zero, zero two, three, eight. And that's my cellphone.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no action required.
Oh, we, we also have free home survey kit, leak kits also, that we can get to you if you have, if you, if you think you may have a leak, uh we can get a kit to you and you can test it to find out if you potentially have leaks in your system.
Okay. Thanks again, John, is there any kind of rain dance, or, or what do you seed the clouds or anything?
I, 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 we do, actually, we do seed the clouds at PG&E. You have to have the clouds to seed. That was part of the problem this year, there weren't enough clouds. Um, but we, we're hoping for a lot of rain and snow next year to get out of this, it's good for the environment, it's good for the fisheries, it's good for the air quality. Uh, but we can't, we can't predict it, I just want to say, if I can, Mayor Hudson, it's an honor representing all of you, so thank you for allowing me to do that. And um, if anybody has any questions or concerns, you know how to get ahold of me, so please reach out.
Yeah, thank you, John. Every year, good or bad, we get the reports and uh yeah, it's something to look forward to, unfortunately, they usually don't come uh one good year and then a bunch of bad ones, or one bad year and a bunch of good ones. They just seem to stack in there, anyway, no action required.
Next year's a person.
Okay, thanks again, and we'll move on to deferred consent calendar item, that's item five point nine. Uh, I believe you pulled this one, Mark, do we have uh someone from staff that's gonna give us a little go-through and tell us how good we're doing, this is the uh approval of the uh statement of investment policy. Who do we have doing, Eva's coming back?
Right, I am here, Kelly Sessions.
Okay, Kelly. Mark's standing for you already.
Yes, thank you. Uh, it's good to be here, thank you, uh, council member Armstrong for uh pulling this item to bring to attention of the city council. By California government code, we are doing our annual review and update to the city's investment policy. Um, and so this happens pretty much every year when we update the budget. Uh, we have an investment advisor, FHN Financial Main Street Advisors, they have reviewed the policy. Uh, they have been the city's investment advisor for several years now. And uh they are proposing these recommended changes, which staff has reviewed as well as uh presented to the finance committee, uh which also uh approved and moved it forward to city council for review. There are three different areas in which the investment policy is proposed for update. One is uh a change in uh the credit rating for certain investments, two is money market funds uh maximums, and three is weighted average maturity, so I'll take each of those uh very quickly. Number one, the investment policy for uh medium-term corporate notes. The proposal is to lower the credit rating required of uh the particular agencies that uh would be allowed uh for investment purposes. The city's policy is more restrictive than the state policy, so this uh proposal would lower the, the credit rating required um from double A minus and double A three to AA and AA two. If you were to look at an investment uh matrix, that would be changing from a very low credit risk to a low credit risk. And uh the other, and that would be for uh medium-term corporate notes that are four years or less in maturity. For those that are uh mature in uh four to five years, the current city standard is triple A, and uh the new proposed standard would change that to double A minus and double A three. Now, the, the types of, of uh organizations that the city would be able to invest in are still very stable, very strong, very large corporations, John Deere, Caterpillar, Toyota, Honeywell, Coca-Cola, uh and it just increases the options for the city to invest in a very low interest rate environment. The second change uh would be in money market funds. Currently, what happens, uh the city, again, the city's policy is more restrictive than the state policy. The city's policy uh has a ten percent max on money market funds uh that the city, that the portfolio can be invested in at any one point in time. And what happens is during certain points of the year, when large uh revenue sources come into the city, or uh maybe a large investment matures, these funds are in a sweep account, they get swept into the money market fund for overnight safekeeping. And that puts the, the city in a position of either being over the policy or the investment advisor has to rush out and buy another security just to keep it within policy. So uh this would relieve pressure on the investment advisor and also keep the city within uh its, its own policy. And then the third area is the weighted average maturity. That is, uh, the weighted average maturity is the weighted average amount of time until a security in a port, in, until the average of all the securities in a pro- portfolio mature. This would increase the weighted average maturity from two years to two and a half years. It adds six months on to the length of the uh weighted average maturity. These are three different ways in which the investment advisor felt that in this very low interest rate environment, we could increase some yield to the city without unduly increasing risk. So those are the three areas, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does that cover it for you, Mark?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Eva for that, I, and I know this went through the finance committee, I just wanted to uh to pull it out, because, you know, I don't personally have a thirteen-page, you know, investment policy of my own, but the city does, and I think it's important for people to understand uh that we do have a statement of investment policy. Um, and that we are wisely and responsibly uh using uh the, the funds that we, in a large part, get from our residents, so I, I thank you for highlighting those three changes. Uh, I think they, they seem to make a lot of sense to me. Uh, and I just want to make sure that, that everyone is aware that it's, it's not just a random process here, but there's a deliberate thought process that goes into uh our investment strategy as managed through FHN uh Financial, of course, but uh thanks again, Eva, for bringing this to our attention.
Kelly, too.
You're welcome.
Yeah, member Perkins, before I, I let the attendee in, go ahead.
Um. Yeah, this came to the finance committee as, as was mentioned, and Sabina and I actually spent quite a bit of time discussing this with Kelly uh at that, at meeting, and we felt that the um changes proposed were very prudent and will actually serve the city um better going forward. It, uh, the um financial advisor brought these to the attention of city staff. And they did it not so much to line their pockets or, or do that, but to provide the city better service, and I thought that was uh it, it was well-founded uh arguments, and um I think that this uh going forward will, will serve the, the city well, so. Um, Sabina and I, like I said, we spent quite a bit of time, probably, we spent more time on this than any other topic on the agenda that day. And uh, so I think that the um these improvements to the uh policy um really, really serve us well. Uh, particularly the changing the maximum money market fund requirement from ten to twenty percent. Um, that would cause the uh FHN to, like, like Kelly said, scramble around to try and make the investments in, uh, you know, according to our investment schedule, but i- it may not be the best investment at that time, so by allowing more money to sit in the money market fund, even for a short period of time, can really serve our, our needs better uh going forward. Thank you.
Okay, um, Sridhar, and then I'll open it up for a public attendee to speak. Sridhar, you had question? Staff, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say um that this is the right direction, I think, given the market condition. And um, it looks like all those investments are like pretty safe, and also uh I don't know, we are yet at a time where we can invest in crypto technology, but uh hopefully we'll see that in future. Because I see that more and more cities are pushing for that. So, thanks, thanks for uh getting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we do have one person that's been, I'm not sure if they wanted to speak on this, but uh that did want this, has had their hand up, so if we can, let's let call and user come in. Uh, we'll open this up to the public. We only have one speaker, we checked earlier, there are no car, I'm sorry, there is no written comment, so go ahead, you have the floor, caller.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
So first of all, I wasn't given a chance to thank uh Ms. Phelps, myself, as a citizen. I just wanna uh let Ms. Phelps know that I don't know you, and I actually cannot connect your face with uh your name, but I want to thank you so much, because um, you know, I've been uh here in the city for over twelve years. And our city has consistently been financially strong. And it must be people like you who can resist greed and corruption, and who has fiercely uh been guarding our city's finance. And I just want to say, God bless you, and thank you so much, and if you could ever consider coming back to teach uh especially our teens about, you know, how to read uh spreadsheets and documentations, you know, that will help them become better uh government officials, um, I, I wish that you would please consider that. Now regarding this uh particular item, uh now Ms. Phelps is leaving, I just want to say that it is essential and necessary, we have annual audit to make sure that, you know, our finances are authentic. Oftentimes, uh many um countries, they would have two books. Uh, they would have one book, uh, you know, for the government, and then one book that, you know, they sort of like, you know, corrupt in the government. I hope that all the, the city council members will be wise enough uh to be able to catch that in time. In addition, a lot of the investments, when they are too good to be true, there could be Ponzi schemes or something. We don't want to be sucked into, you know, like, really, really um good interest rates or, you know, returns for a while, and all of a sudden, we lose it all. Please be very cautious, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under the public hearing? Going once, twice, seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing. The matter is before us, it's item five point nine, it was pulled by council member Armstrong, who has already taken his mute button off. You're up.
Sure, I'd, I'd like to move, uh, we uh approve resolution uh number twenty, twenty-one dash zero eight one, approving the proposed FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two statement of investment policy.
Second?
Oh, you got it.
Got it.
Sabina, okay, we have a motion Armstrong, second Perkins, any further discussion? I will just say that uh I, I've changed a lot on this, uh, I was there when we were sweating a couple of those investments, but uh it's you know, regardless of where you may see the double A, triple A, three, double X, which, whatever you want to call it. Uh, i- if you're comfortable with the companies and you've dealt with them, and you, you really have got your eyes open and are doing the audit, which we do every year, that the caller brought up, um, you know, this, this may be a change of the time. Now, this, this may be a change of the times. I guess I need to be a little less paltry and a little bit more listening to letting you two do the discussions instead of having to go through the hour long meetings. So I'm going to vote for it this time. So let's do the roll call vote and move on to the other public hearings if there's no further discussions.
And if anybody wants to get more details, they can always watch the finance committee meeting on YouTube.
I don't know who that was, but it wasn't me. Okay, Kristina, roll call vote.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmember Safar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes.
And we will move, and there are no city council appointments other than what we did earlier today at a special meeting. Unfinished business, this is a public hearing for resolution number 2021 dash 74 confirming the preserve landscape in a lighting district assessment diagram and assessments and levying the preserve landscaping and lighting district assessment for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Robin Bartlett, this is your first time up for the evening. Are you with us?
I am indeed.
Okay, you've got the floor.
All right, let me share my screen here. Before the hearing, I'd just like to go over a few elements of the Preserve Lighting and Landscaping District. And there we go. So the district was formed in 2018. The assessments from the district fund the maintenance of public landscaping for the Preserve Development, formerly known as FREA. The residents pay a separate assessment for the citywide lighting and landscaping of landscaping district 1984 dash one zones one and two. So just to recap, this is where the FREA Preserve is. Most of the improvements are located along FREA Parkway, which is the main road into and out of the development. Previous actions of the city council include the on April 26, the engineer's report was reviewed by the finance committee. And on April 27, the engineer's report was approved by the city council and a public hearing set for today. No improvements have been accepted into the landscaping district as of this date. Improvements have been expected to be accepted during this year. That's currently looking to be unlikely. But substantial improvements are anticipated to be accepted next year. Just to recap, the differences between the maximum assessment rate versus the actual assess assessment rate. The maximum assessment rate is the not to exceed amount, which was voted on and approved by the property owners at the creation of the district. The actual assessment rate may be less. The actual assessment rate is the rate to be levied every fiscal year, which is what is charged to the owners on their property tax bills. The assessments may be increased by the city council up to the maximum assessment rate. The total expected accessible costs for fiscal year 21, 22 is $114,522. The number of assessment points is 406. The proposed, the proposed assessment rate therefore is $282.07. The Preserve will have a reserve for long term replacements of $55,096. And the anticipated operating reserve will be $151,872 at the start of fiscal year 21, 22. So the initial maximum assessment at formation was $363.13 per benefit point. The initial assessment can be increased by the greater of consumer price index or 2%. Current assessment is maximum assessment is $373.66 per benefit point. CPI this year was 1.6%. Therefore, the maximum assessment can be increased by 2% to $381.13. Just a reminder, a single family home is one benefit point, but condominiums pay three quarters of a benefit point. So the steps taken annually by the city council include adoption of a resolution describing the new improvements and ordering the preparation and filing of the engineer's report. This was completed on March 23, 2001. Second step is to approve the engineer's report and adopt a resolution of intent to levy and collect the assessments and setting a public hearing. This was accomplished on April 27, 2021. And the next step is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the the diagram and assessments and a levying the assessments. That's today. Final steps will be to file the engineer's report together with the assessment role and the assessment diagram with the Contra Costa County Assessor's Office by August 10, 2021. With that, staff's recommendation is that city council conduct the public hearing and approve the resolution confirming the preserve landscaping and lighting district diagram and assessments and levying the assessment for fiscal year 2021, 22. Are there any questions?
Are there any clarifying questions of staff before I open the public hearing? I don't see any hands from the vice mayor or council. The public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak under public comment on these, on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone when it is your turn to talk and call upon a name if provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes and a clock will be running on the Zoom screen. The speaker's microphone will be muted once the allotted time is expired. I'm looking, I don't see any attendees wishing to speak to this. Do we have any written comments, city clerk?
We do not have any written comments.
Okay, seeing none. And then there's no public, I would ask then, is there any member of the council that wishes to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I can move to close the public hearing.
Sabina, beat you to it, Scott. Motion Safar, second Perkins. Any further discussion before we take the vote to close the public hearing? Seeing none, let's do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmember Safar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. The matter before us is to adopt resolution 2021 dash 74. Do I hear a motion? So move.
Move.
Oh, he is motion Perkins, second Safar. Any further discussion before we vote on the matter? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmember Safar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five oh, item 9.2, a public hearing, resolution number 2021 dash 73 confirming the landscape in a lighting district number 1984 dash one diagram and assessments and living at the landscape and lighting district number 1984 dash one assessment for fiscal year 2021 dash 2022. And the staff report is Sean Anderson. Do we have Sean with us?
Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll go ahead and speak on this one. We did receive a letter of protest from Greenfire Law Firm a couple of weeks back outlining several concerns about zone five and how its assessment was calculated. We've taken a look at those at at the zone five calculations and we're confident at this point that we can make adjustments to that zone five assessment to the point where where we can move it forward at the next hearing. So we're asking now that that you open the public hearing without hearing from Public Works Department. But just in case someone from the public is here to speak on the item and then and then I'd ask you to entertain a motion to continue it to the 22nd.
Will do. Okay, then there not going to be a staff report from Sean Anderson. We will open the public hearing. I am looking for the attendees to see if anybody wishes to speak to it. I'll read the same thing I've been reading all night. If you wish to speak under public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand. I'm going to start doing some kind of dance to this, make it cuter like, you know, feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone. When it's your turn to talk, call upon your name if provided. Remarks limited to three minutes. Still don't have anybody wants to talk. And a clock will be running on Zoom screen. The speaker's microphone will be muted once the allotted time is expired. Again, we do have a written comment on this also, but there is no one that wishes to speak. We are not going to close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to continue this hearing, a public hearing until June 22, 2021. Go ahead, Mr. Perkins.
I I I move that we continue this item to June 22, 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion Perkins, second Safar, any you unmuted, Mr. Armstrong, did you have something?
No, I was gonna try to be.
Just wait for the vote. Okay, let's have a roll call vote on that.
All right, we're going to take turns on this one.
Yeah.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmembers Safar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a five oh, and the next item is going to be new business, but I'm going to jump ahead instead of wait until nine o'clock. I'm going to ask that we take the five minute break now because we've got 10, 1, 10, 2, and 10 something else. Three, four, and five. So let's do it now and come back in five. Is that okay with everyone? I don't see anybody fighting it. See you back in about five minutes, which usually turns out to be six or seven. I'm ready when everybody else is. Ready when you are.
We are ready.
Okay, the gang's all here. We are back in session. We are on to new business 10.1, this is a public hearing. An introduction of an ordinance next in line, amending Title C, Division C six of the San Ramon Municipal Code by adding chapter seven relating to pavement cut moratorium. Staff report, Robin Bartlett is back.
Good evening again. Let me briefly recap what this hearing is about. Staff is recommending adoption of this ordinance formally establishing a pavement cut moratorium on new and recently main straight streets due to increasing strain on the pavement management budgets, the large number of streets that are receiving preventative maintenance, large increase in the amount of utility work that has been recently undertaken, and the desire to ensure maximum protection of the city's interests. Pavement cuts typically by utility companies doing maintenance damage the roads in a number of ways. They allow water infiltration. They reduce load transfer across the cut joint. It results in a reduction in the support of soils on the sidewalks of the trench. There's settlement of backfill, non-uniform support and non-uniform behavior of the underlying soils and non-uniform appearance resulting in blurring of lane lines, especially during night and during wet weather. For new pavements, this is particularly significant as full restoration is farther off due to the normal pavement management cycle. The proposed ordinance will still allow cuts to occur with approval approval from the director. However, more stringent restoration requirements will be in place. These will include for recently paved or newly constructed roads with AC treatments that the road be milled and filled with two inches of asphalt concrete over full lane width. And for areas where slurries or other similar treatments have been applied, a new treatment of similar quality will be required over the full width of the cut. a new treatment of similar quality will be required over the full width of the cut. For those asphalt concrete roads, the moratorium will be in place for five years. And for slurries and similar treatments, it will be in place for three years. This item was presented to the policy committee on May twenty sixth and they recommended, recommended that it be presented to the city council. So inclusion, in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council receive the staff report, introduce the ordinance. Waive the reading and read by title only. Open the public hearing to consider the proposed ordinance. Receive public testimony, deliberate, close the public hearing and set the ordinance for adoption on June twenty second, twenty twenty one. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions of staff. Looking, I don't see any panelists with their blue hands up. So I will help expedite this by moving the introduction of the ordinance next in line. Many titles C, division C six of San Ramon Municipal Code. By adding chapter seven relating to pavement cut moratorium and waive the reading and open and conduct the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I second.
Ah, Shridar, but we thought you fell asleep over there for a while. You were letting the other two get, okay. Motion Hudson, second, Shridar Veros, uh, council discussion on the motion. Okay, let's uh, do the roll call vote just on introducing the ordinance first and then I'll open up public comment. We need a roll call vote. Carter by, Carter speechless. Christina, we do need a roll call vote to open this up.
Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Veros?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Looks like a five oh to me. Okay, this is open for public hearing. Uh, public if, see, stop me if you've heard this before. If you wish to speak under public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone when it is your turn to talk. To call upon your name, if provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Uh, speakers microphone be muted once the allotted time is up. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Have we had any cards to speak on this?
We have not received any written comment for this item.
Okay, then can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Caught up. Motion Perkins, second Armstrong. You guys don't even need to unmute anymore. I just read the lips. Okay. Uh, I assume there's gonna be no discussion on that. This is a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a roll call vote?
Who is the first and second?
The first was Perkins, second Armstrong.
Thank you. Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Veros?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the matter before us is, do I have a motion to set the ordinance for adoption at the next city council meeting on June twenty second, twenty twenty one? In fact, consider that my motion to set the ordinance for adoption at the next city council meeting on June.
I second that.
Wait, second Veros. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Rose?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes, five oh, once again, ten point two is a public hearing introduction of ordinance next in line amending title C, division C four, chapter four, flood insurance program of the San Ram- San Ramon Municipal Code. Uh, staff report, associate engineer Shane Asai. Where is Shane doing it or Robin, you back again?
Uh, no, here, I'm here.
You're up.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the city, uh, good evening, mayor and uh, council members. Uh, the city has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program CRS or the Community Rating System since nineteen ninety one. Under the CRS, local governments undertake various activities to reduce the frequency and magnitude of flood insurance claims or increase the number of residents obtaining coverage. In turn, the community receives CRS classifications from class one to class ten based on low, uh, total credits of these activities. The city is currently as class six qualifying flood insurance premium reductions of twenty percent for twenty two existing policies in special flood zones and ten percent for the forty policies outside the flood zones. Uh, so every five years, FEMA conducts cycle verification visits. It involves a detailed review of all activities and determine if the community can maintain the class status. The city's next visit is scheduled for the June. Uh, back in February, the FEMA Regional Office held a community assistant contact meeting to help us through the cycle verification. So the FEMA's planner reviewed the city's municipal code uh, regarding flood insurance program and suggested several revisions to make our municipal code compliant with FEMA's latest regulations. Uh, these changes are uh, discussed with the city attorney and we determined that they are minor, acceptable, and not expected to have significant impacts. Uh, the details are all included in the attachment of the staff report. Uh, so, uh, we presented the proposed changes to the policy committee on May twenty six, twenty twenty one. And the committee recommended the adoption of these changes. So in conclusion, uh, staff recommends the city council to receive a staff report, introduce the ordinance, waive the reading and read by the title only. Open the public hearing to consider the proposed ordinance, receive public testimony, deliberate, close the public hearing and set the ordinance for adoption at the next council meeting, which is on June twenty second, twenty twenty one. Uh, any questions?
Hey, do we have any questions for Shane? Uh, seeing no hands from the vice mayor or council. I will expedite this by I'll move to introduce the ordinance next in line amending title C, division C four, chapter four, flood insurance program of the San Ramon Municipal Code and waive the reading. And we are open and ready to conduct the public hearing and a second by Armstrong before the rest you go. Get in there quick. Is that correct, Mark?
So good.
That's what I thought. Okay, um, any further discussion before we take the roll call vote just to open or introduce of the introduction of this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Veros?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes, that's five oh. Stop me if you've heard this before. The public hearing is open if you wish to speak under public comment on this item. Please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone. When it's your turn to talk and call upon your name and provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and a clock will be running on the Zoom screen. The speakers microphone will be muted once the allotted time has expired. Is there anyone wishing to speak under public comment? I don't see any. Did we have any written?
We received no written comment.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move the motion.
Motion Veros, second. Armstrong, I saw the hand go up. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Veros?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes. Okay, is there any further discussion from anyone in the council before we set the ordinance for adoption at the next council meeting on June twenty second? Seeing none, or I do see Mark Armstrong?
Yeah, I'd, I'll just say, we often talk about uh, fires and earthquakes, you know, here in the Bay Area, but you know, nationally flooding is the, is probably the most common and costly disaster out there. And we don't have a lot of residents uh, that are in the special or near the special flood hazard area uh, that are participants in the National Flood Insurance Program. But I think anything that we can do to help our residents reduce the cost of that flood insurance is a, a step in the right direction. So I'm glad to see uh, this moving uh, towards that final adoption.
Is that a motion by Armstrong to set the ordinance for adoption at the next council meeting on June twenty second?
So move.
I can second.
A, a second, uh, so far, and I will tell you as one of the persons who was in that special zone. Thank you very much, staff, for getting me out of that special zone. It was not fun year after, anyway. Um, any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Seeing none, Christina?
Council member Armstrong?
Yes.
Council member Veros?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sounds like a five oh. Ten point three is resolution number twenty twenty one, DAS eighty two, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, operating in capital budget, establishing an appropriations limit and authorizing carryover project appropriation. Uh, okay, Eva Phelps is still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Staff report?
Last.
Veteran Eva Phelps.
Well, good evening again, mayor and city council and staff and members of the public. I'm here to present the twenty one, twenty two, um, proposed budget. Um, in your packet, you have the full document. And after my presentation, I have a presentation prepared. Um, I can answer any questions if you have any uh, regarding the document. So if Christine, if you can start the presentation for me, thank you. Next slide. So the budget development process, we all started, we had a kickoff in January, starting the budget process. The staff um, formulate all their budget requests to the city manager and the city manager reviewed the department request in March. And then also in the latter part of March, the council had their retreat, uh, going over their, uh, goal settings. So from there, we, uh, put together a preliminary budget. We had three council budget study sessions on April thirteenth, May eleventh, and May twenty fifth. Uh, the council was able to review the proposed budget in five-year capital improvement program on May eleventh and May twenty fifth. So the total, um, proposed expenditures for all city funds, uh, is a hundred and twenty-two point eight million. Uh, the operating budget makes up eight, eighty-five point five million. We have our special revenue funds that are non-operating is five hundred thousand, debt service is three point eight million, capital budget is seventeen million, the internal service funds are fifteen point eight million. The Doherty Valley GAD is eight hundred thousand, which is included in the operating budget number. And then the housing successor is two hundred thousand. So this pie chart just kind of shows you the breakup of those expenditures. Forty-five percent is general fund. Uh, twenty-five percent is, uh, special district funds. Sixteen percent is a special funds, which make up the special revenue funds, non-operating, the housing successor, the debt service and internal service funds. And fourteen percent of expenditures are the capital budget. So we have, um, estimated eight, a hundred and eighteen point four million of revenue to pay for those services, those expenditures and four point four million, um, makes up the difference to provide all the funding we need for the hundred and twenty-two point, uh, eight million. So forty-seven percent is general purpose and the other fifty-three percent is coming from, uh, restricted, uh, special purpose funds like the, uh, special assessment districts in GAD. Uh, we have some special revenue for capital projects, the housing successor, debt service and internal service. So here's just the breakdown of revenue by fund. Um, and the general fund makes up forty-seven percent. The special, uh, district funds make up twenty-eight percent and then the special funds make up twenty-five percent. So going on to the operating budget, these are, uh, the general fund, the Doherty Valley CSA fund. We have twenty special lighting and landscaping special district funds, the storm water fund, the T GAD, uh, two GAD funds and other small special, special revenue funds. So this chart kind of gives you a comparison of expenditures by department. Uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're proposing a budget of eighty-five point five million. Uh, compared to twenty twenty-one of seventy-nine point four million. That's a six point one per, uh, six, six point one million dollars uh, in increases. Our operating revenue is eighty-eight point one million and majority of it is coming from the general fund. Next slide. So regarding the general fund, our expenditure budget is fifty-five million. That's four point five million or eight point nine million more than twenty twenty-one amended budget. And the reason for those increases has to do with restoring expenditures from the COVID nineteen reductions that we had to make in twenty twenty-one. Uh, normal increases in salary, employee benefits and pension, increase in utility costs and service contracts and some new positions. So expenditures dot by department, um, again, the expenditure, uh, budget for twenty-one, twenty-two is fifty-five point zero million. Uh, twenty twenty-one, our budget, uh, amended budget is fifty point five. That's a four point five increase. Uh, general fund expenditures by department, we just like to show the pie chart showing you that police make up thirty-one percent of the general fund budget. Uh, and next in line is Public Works at twenty-nine percent. And then the rest of the departments, Parks and Rec makes up sixteen percent. Administrative Services, ten percent, Community Development, eight percent, and General Government and Non-Departmental is six percent. And General Government is included in that is City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. So revenue is estimated at fifty-five million. That's two point five million or four point seven above the twenty twenty-one revised budget. So we're be able to project some of our, uh, revenue loss, bringing that back up. Uh, we're still seeing increases in property tax, our sales taxes up, uh, higher than this year. Uh, property transfer tax is higher. Our TOT is still lagging. We're hoping that, um, now that everything's opening up, we may see better numbers when the, we get all the numbers together. But for now, we're showing that it'll probably come back um, to regular, uh, numbers, uh, in, uh, the following year. Uh, franchise fees is still flat. Our license and permit is pretty flat. Uh, same with, uh, charges for services is, uh, a little up and then other is slightly up also. So just comparing the revenue and expenditures and transfers from the, for the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed to the revised twenty twenty-one budget. As you can see, revenues up, expenditures are up, and then our transfers, um, our transfer out is we're gonna use one point eight million in reserves to fill the gap. So on other funds, the Doherty Valley CSA fund, we track this fund, uh, as part of the agreement. Expenditures are twenty-three point six million. That's up one point million from twenty twenty-one revised budget. It includes four hundred thousand in contributions to capital projects. And sources that fund the CSA is CSA assessments and property taxes and other, uh, financing sources, which is the general fund. We transfer, uh, funding into this fund to fill the gap. So Doherty Valley, there is some new infrastructure being added in twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, twelve point five acres of landscape. Two point four street miles of, uh, roadways and sidewalks, a hundred and twenty-six street lights and point two five miles of trail. So for the internal service funds, the equipment replacement and IT replacement fund, the beginning balance is projected at three point nine million. Uh, we're collecting one point three million of revenue from the departments to fund this fund. And, uh, we're gonna spend about six hundred thousand for vehicles and equipment replacement and two hundred thousand for computer equipment replacement, leaving a balance at the end of the fiscal year at four point four million. The infrastructure maintenance fund, uh, we're starting the year at six hundred thousand. Uh, we're showing a one point five million transfer in from the, uh, ARPA funds, that's the American Recovery Plan Act. Uh, so those funds will go in there to help fund the, some capital projects. Uh, in the capital budget, there's one point seven million of capital projects that are needed that are being funded out of the infrastructure maintenance fund, uh, so that the ending fund balance will be about four hundred thousand. And there's no general fund contribution to the infrastructure maintenance. Um, the retiree health, uh, care funding, we, uh, collect about one point eight million to fund this. Uh, we have about thirty-eight point two million set aside in a trust as of April. Uh, ninety-five percent funded based on the April twenty twenty study, where our liability, uh, unfunded liability is thirty-two point seven million. So we have a lot more set aside in our trust, but this report is- So we have a lot more set aside in our trust, but this report is as of last year, and it's not due to be updated until June of twenty twenty. We do that, uh, we're required to update our actuary every two years, so we'll get some new numbers next year. And we have nothing in the budget to make a deposit into the trust for next year. Uh, under pension costs, uh, we have about forty-two million um unfunded liability. It has increased five point nine million uh per the CalPERS most recent actuary. We won't receive the next actuary until uh maybe July or August. Uh, so we'll see how things have changed from one year to the next. Uh, we've implemented several strategies to address rising pension costs. Uh, and we do have a set aside um uh trust for pension costs where we have five million as of uh April. So on to the debt service funds, we have four um debts. We have the pension obligation bonds. So in next year, the payment is one point four million. Uh, once we make that payment, our principal balance at the end of the fiscal year uh for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two would be at fourteen point two million. We have the two thousand eleven uh certificate of participation. Uh, the debt service payment is five hundred thousand, and the principal balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two would be nine hundred thousand. So we're almost to the end of that um C O P. Uh, we have the new uh two thousand nineteen certificate of participation that we did two years ago. Um, the payment uh for next year is one point six million. The principal balance will be nineteen point two million at the end of the fiscal year. We also have the two thousand twelve LED lights. The payment uh for next year is three hundred thousand, and the principal balance would be after making that payment of seven hundred to seven hundred thousand. So general reserves, the uh propose uh the general reserve policy is currently at thirty-six percent of it. Uh, estimated ex uh general fund expenditures, including an annual uh, the annual general fund transfer to Doherty Valley, that's how it's calculated. Uh, it is, once you calculate it, in order to satisfy the policy, we would have to have eighteen point one million in uh reserves. As you can see, we're gonna start the new year at twenty point five. Uh, we're asking to use one point eight million in reserves, leaving a balance of eighteen point seven million. So we're, we're satisfying the reserve, we're staying above that thirty-six percent level. So under the capital improvement program, um fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the capital budget has seventy-three projects, the budget of fifty-three million, seventeen million is the city managed and funded, and the rest is funded uh in managed by uh other sources. Like the biggest one would be the uh Fire District uh Safety Complex. Uh, under the five-year C I P twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, there's a hundred and thirty-three projects, and the budget for the total is a hundred and one point three two million. These are nine of the new C I P projects that were introduced, that is the Cricket Field Installation, the Fostoria Way Costco driveway traffic signal, the Iron Horse Middle School field replacement, we have the pavement management twenty twenty-six, the pavement repair stopgap twenty-six, twenty-seven, the Police and Fire District Joint uh Public Safety Complex, uh, the sidewalk repair twenty-six, twenty-seven, the Sunrise Ridge Park Preserve Park, and the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fee Study Update. So a total of forty-four point five million has been added to the capital improvement program. So the future outlook, our economist is predicting a strong twenty twenty-one fiscal recovery as the pandemic pandemic wanes. Uh, our financial advisors are warning us of inflationary trends that are showing on the horizon. Uh, rising costs of public pensions across the state driven by decisions made by the CalPERS, CalPERS Board. We have unfunded projects and rising costs of infrastructure maintenance, and just population growth and staffing needs. So the Budget Adoption Resolution Number two thousand twenty twenty-one zero eight-two approves the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two operating in capital budget, which establishes expenditure authority for the city. It establishes the appropriation limit as required by state, and it also uh authorizes carryover unspent project, uh capital project funds in the C I P. So if you adopt the budget tonight, um, the next steps for us will be to finalize the adopted budget and then post the document to the website. And that is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer.
I'm ready to move.
Davis, uh, you're, you're on mute, Dave.
Dave, you're on mute.
I know you guys just love that. Okay, seeing no questions up council. Let's open the public comment, see if anybody wants to speak this late at night. If you wish to speak under public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone. When it is your turn to talk, we will call upon you by name if provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and a clock will be running on the Zoom screen. Uh, speaker's microphone will be muted, just like the mayor's was, once the allotted time has expired. I don't see any attendees wishing to speak at this time. We will close the public comment. Uh, the discussion is before the council, and who's gonna rush out there and make the motion first? There.
I'm moving this.
So far, I assume it's to move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighty-two, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, operating capital budget, establishing an appropriations limit and authorizing carryover project appropriation. Do I have a second? There's the other finance person, we have a second, Perkins. The battle goes on. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no hands, no way, let's get a roll call vote.
Just wanna make a comment that this has been an amazing, interesting process where money has come and gone, and you know, Ava, you've really navigated this budget uh incredibly well. So I don't remember, at least in the last two years, our budgets being, maybe last year, but this has been a very interesting process.
And by the way, what is our final number, or is it still going, Eva? It's not fourteen million, I know that. What are we down to? Four dollars and thirty-six cents, or what?
We have a little bit more than that. No, we have, um, we're eighteen, eighteen point seven million in reserves.
No, 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 no.
No, no, the, our, ARPA.
You know that.
Oh, it went down from fourteen point three to eight point one, I think. Is that correct, Kelly?
Is it still dropping?
Uh, no, it's still the same, but that, that was a big drop. We don't need it to drop anymore.
Is the check in the mail?
Not yet.
Oh, boy. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Veros?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five oh, item ten point four is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment number one to the franchise agreement, uh, that'd be C twenty eighteen dash seventy with Alameda County Industries of San Ramon, Inc., A C I related to COVID nineteen revenue shortfalls. And I believe we have Robin Bartlett up again.
Yes, good evening again. Um, before I start, I would uh like to point out that Kerry Parker, our new environmental services program manager, uh, and Rob Hilton with H F N H are consultant for refuse services, and Chris Valbusa with A C I are all available uh also if you have any questions. Uh, so, as indicated in the title, uh, this is about COVID nineteen. The COVID nineteen pandemic has had uh pretty wide-ranging impacts, uh particularly on uh businesses. And uh, that's had an impact on uh the refuse uh services provided to those uh businesses. Uh, a lot of businesses have experienced uh substantial um uh drops and ability, inability to provide services, and therefore they are uh reducing their uh requested uh services uh from A C I. At the same time, uh residential demand has actually increased. So put that together, and uh A C I has experienced a uh substantial uh loss in revenue. And if I can just share my screen, I've summarized some of these issues in um couple of slides here, hopefully you can all see that. So uh, as I mentioned, A C I has experienced a substantial drop uh in revenue, which is estimated at about uh one point five million dollars through now. Uh, in response, back in December, A C I requested that they have an extraordinary rate increase per the terms of the contract. An extraordinary rate increase is a uh provision in the contract that allows the hauler to request a rate increase under certain circumstances. And the current circumstances would likely uh trigger this clause, and this rate increase would be um examined under the same uh complex method that we use for a regular rate increase. Uh, and our current uh contract envisions that we would ordinarily have a rate increase in for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So um, the problem that we're facing here is that COVID was not really anticipated in the structure of the agreement. The extraordinary rate increase provision doesn't really uh, isn't really perfectly suited for the situation we're dealing with. For example, uh, there's no uh element within it to have a reset from the rate increase when the uh issues related to COVID nineteen uh dissipate, which we all hope they will in the near future. So in order to uh deal with that um issue, we proposed a different uh solution that uh avoids any rate increases. We have a reserve in the solid waste fund that is approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that reserve has um accumulated over time from a variety of uh sources, including uh delays in household hazardous waste program, delays in hiring the recycling coordinator, which was another um issue that ties into COVID. And therefore, we're in a position to transfer approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city's solid waste fund to A C I. Another uh source of funds that we can use in lieu of a rate increase is suspension of the payment of the refuse vehicle impact uh fee, which um could be to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that would give us a total of the one point five million that we're looking for. The refuse vehicle impact fee under the proposed agreement would be paid back over a three-year period following the end of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, so in order to maintain uh continuity of uh financing for pavement management, uh, we can make up the funds from general fund or some other funding sources to be determined, and then pay that back over time with the repayments from the uh, from A C I. When we presented this uh issue to uh the Finance Committee, we also uh discussed a rate stabilization fund. Uh, we no longer think that's necessary. Uh, this mechanism is uh simple enough that um it seems unnecessary to have the rate stabilization fund uh at this time. So with that, that summarizes the uh problem and the proposed solution. Um, uh, do you have any questions for us?
Mayor Hudson, you're on mute.
On mute. Still on mute.
Still on mute. There you go.
Okay, all right, that's the third time. Three strikes, I'm out. Go ahead, Scott first, then Shridhar.
Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, I really appreciate the uh way staff and A C I worked together to to create this solution. Uh, once again, the Finance Committee went over this in uh quite a bit of detail. And uh, I'm grateful that we had the uh solid waste fund we'd been collecting for a few years so that we could use that for this purpose. And um, uh, I recognize that uh A C I is, is kind of taking a hit. You know, I talked to one of their folks a while back, and I said, you know, uh, everybody's gonna have to, to give a little bit on this one. And um, not everybody's gonna be completely whole at the end. And I do appreciate the fact that A C I stepped up and, and they're gonna squeeze their um profits down to virtually nothing, or possibly um uh take a small hit, uh, but you know, giving them the seven hundred and fifty thousand, then giving them a, a deferral of the um refuse vehicle um impact fee. Um, it's gonna make this, this uh deal work, and I really appreciate staff and A C I working together to make this happen.
Councilmember Veros?
Uh, thank you, Robin. So regarding this refusal vehicle impact fee, seven fifty K, is that for uh one year, or for how many years we are going to defer that?
The deferment of the fee would be for this uh going forward for this year uh until the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is made up. So that would be approximately half of the refuse vehicle impact fee for this year. So it would really uh be a loss of these funds for the next six months. The, it would then be paid back over a three-year period.
Okay, so we are going to defer for six months, and then it'll be reinstated, does? I, I think I'm.
Uh, yes, so basically, the way it would work is the um city's pavement management program would be out the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars unless it is made up from some other source. There would then be a gap in time, uh, depending on when we decide that the uh COVID uh nineteen effects are no longer being felt, and then the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be, begin to be paid back over a three-year period.
Okay, so do we have like rough, like any prediction, like any idea like uh after this COVID pandemic, open up them market and all that? Do you have any rough idea how long this will go on?
Well, uh, I would anticipate that this would be not later than our next um rate restructuring uh or, or normal rate increase that we're anticipating, uh, which is about uh a year and a half from now. So that's probably a, a reasonable maximum.
Uh, that sounds good. Thank you.
Sabina, did I jump over you? Do you want to speak before Mark?
No, I think we, we asked most of the questions in the Finance Committee meeting, so um, I can, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
I just wanna thank uh Robin, I wanna thank the staff and the Finance Committee for uh finding a creative solution to avoid this extraordinary rate increase and, and just avoid, you know, a big increase for our citizens. I know uh it, it's not easy adjusting from all the things that we've seen and uh during the pandemic, but I think my main concern uh as you were presenting it was on the, the pavement management uh program, and uh what we're gonna do about that to preserve uh that in our streets, but I, I think we can come up with some creative ways to replenish uh those funds and uh, and still execute uh the pavement management program to standards. So anyway, thanks again to all the staff and, and the Finance Committee for digging into this.
Good comments. Okay, public comment is open. Everyone, repeat after me. If you wish to speak under public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone. When it is your turn to talk, we will call upon your name if provided. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person. A clock will be running on the Zoom screen. The speaker's microphone will be muted once the allotted time has expired. The public comment is open. We have thirteen attendees. Anybody wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, as their public comment is closed, do we have any uh cards on this, Christina?
No written comment.
Okay, there's no written comments. It is back before the council. And uh, for council discussion before a mo- motion to adopt the resolution. Anyone wish to speak?
Move?
Uh, Sabina jumped ahead of it. Is that a?
I'll second, I'll second uh the the motion for resolution twenty twenty one dash eighty oh eighty three.
Okay, and all the other good stuff that goes with it. Uh any further discussion seeing none, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Veros?
Yes.
Councilmembers of far?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes. That's five oh, we're getting down to the finish here. Hang with us, ten point five consideration of and direction to staff regarding. The interview process for the Parks and Community Service Commission applicants, staff report, Christina.
Thank you. So tonight we are looking for the council to discuss and provide direction, how you would like to conduct the interviews for the Parks and Community Services Commission. Uh the clerk's office, we did receive a total of eleven applications for the upcoming vacancies due to the terms expiring. Uh eight of those applicants have been interviewed um on February twenty second as part of a special meeting to fill a vacancy that occurred. Um so tonight it's. After discussion of the council, uh would you prefer to interview all eleven candidates? Would you prefer to interview the three new candidates? Um and how would you like the interviews to be conducted?
Joe, okay, Mr. Perkins, you're up. And you're on mute.
It's it's been five months. And unfortunately, I didn't keep my notes. And. I'd hate to discount. Somebody that applied and was interviewed back in February. Because I can't remember them. And so I I'm not sure it's. It's fair to the uh eight that we've already interviewed. Um. Because. We just, I it's. COVID fog, I don't know, but um I would prefer to interview all eleven. I know it's a burden to my fellow council members. But I don't have my notes and I'm not sure that if you put one of those names in front of me. I could remember. Enough about their responses to our questions. To give them a fair um. Vote uh going forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call on each one of the council members. I just want to tell you, in all honesty, if one person requests all of them. We probably should do all of them. Uh Mark, you're up.
Yeah, I I was able to find my notes. Uh I I my positions change on this a couple of times, but I did find my notes, but it was chicken scratch and. As Councilmember Perkins said, uh I think just in all fairness to all the candidates. Uh we give everyone a fair uh shot at the at the interview process. Um I I think there are some new issues that we've been discussing lately that have to do with parks. Uh that you know with B R six or with Crocania Gardens uh. You know, there's been budget discussions that affect parks and things like that, that. We wouldn't want the uh just the the new members who have seen some of that discussion to have that advantage with the previous. Uh ones who interviewed uh didn't have the opportunity to uh enjoy that discussion, so. And I think it's good to just be transparent to the public. And uh and let them see all the candidates and see our decision making process on all of them. Um. So I think everybody ought to get an equal. A chance at this, this this is it's an important commission. And uh we shouldn't take it lightly, you know, just for a few hours of our time, we can take the time to do this right and uh. And that's how I feel at this point. Thank you.
And everyone has the option of not doing it again. Uh Sabina?
I was, I had a question and a comment. So is this recorded? Do we have this on YouTube? So we don't need notes and we can just watch this?
It is recorded and is on YouTube, yes.
Okay, so that's one option that we go back and watch this on our own time and, you know, refresh our notes. Um the second one is, are we going to ask everybody to submit or just by default think that people who were interested before? Uh would be interested now as well. So how would that process look like?
So we went back to those candidates and they're all interested.
Okay.
Except for two, I apologize, except for two.
Okay. Yeah, so. I mean, that's an option that we watch these on YouTube and kind of. Not put them through the drill and then uh interview the new candidates.
Yeah, and they have the option. Also, Shridhar.
So um. I agree with the council member Armstrong and Vice Mayor Perkins that uh we should give a fair shot to everyone once again because of uh. Changes that's happening and uh. Uh also, I consider Parks Commission uh definitely very critical. Uh for our community. Uh actually, council members Jafar gave a very good idea. That we can watch the videos and find out that notes, but uh. Given the changes that keep happening and also we are getting ready for our post COVID. Uh I definitely want to hear more from them, their ideas and suggestions. So unfortunately, they have to go through this grill and we have to sit through that whole interview process. Uh. But uh it is what it takes, right? So. I would be willing to go with the interview process with all of them. I in fact, like maybe we can do the same thing like the one which we did with our table lab that. One by one candidate, we can do like. One single round table interview. And then, yeah.
Whatever it takes.
So, yeah, I was just gonna say quickly that if if that's the that seems to be the consensus, could we do it in person then? The normal way, you know, we've done one of them before, so.
Yeah.
So masking requirements are still in effect for inside, so that would just be something that the council would need to consider.
Yeah.
So if we do this before the fifteenth?
Uh I think it's.
We, I I I honestly, we couldn't get it scheduled before then because I have to schedule eleven candidates by next Tuesday and. And put and noticing, I can try, but.
No, what that's what I meant, like after the fifteenth, we may we may not have the masking requirements. That's what I was.
Yeah.
I would have to defer to the city manager for that.
We're still in, we're getting there, but we're still kind of a foggy state, I'll say. Uh you know, the OSHA has come down with some rulings. I I believe they're having an updated meeting. I think tomorrow, but um you know, there the council chambers and city hall is also a workplace, and so there's some question. As who is this, you know, what guidelines this would fall under? So with that being said. Um I would not uh plan on uh really opening um the city council uh meetings back up probably until July now, one of the meetings in July.
Yeah. I do have one person who wants to speak from the public, so let's let her chime in. Uh your cat gets to vote too, Sabina. So let's go, call her in, let's bring her in and let her speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say that this sounds like, you know, those students who have taken previous tests and then uh, you know, they can kind of um. You know, either go out and tell other people what they were asked or that, you know, I just feel like if if um. You know, you guys know to watch YouTube, uh wouldn't the new candidates know also to watch the YouTube? And then wouldn't that uh put them in a a a more advantageous position? Um I just think that um it's better to just treat everyone as equal since there are two dropouts. Uh that you guys please just enter the interview them, uh you know, from scratch. And then please make sure you change your your questions, because otherwise. Um you know, they they can. Uh the ones who have already been asked the questions can probably answer better because they've already taken the test once, um vice versa. Also. I would like you guys to or uh the officials to please kindly ask the candidates uh to disclose. Uh any affiliation or relationships with any city staff, council members. Uh and also their political affiliation, if they're affiliated with A C L U or any like um. Environmental uh activist groups. Or even political affiliation, whether they're Democrats or Republicans or, you know, Communist Chinese Party. Uh you know, elites, uh I would like to know because these people uh you know are uh privy to a lot of uh information, they can also recommend. Measures uh and resolutions to you uh that I would be deeply concerned if they're volunteering for their own interest or political interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. Um the direction I'm hearing right now. Is that you want to at least make interview available to all candidates? I mean, there's nothing, I don't know how you would tell a candidate that if they don't want to interview like we did tonight, that. They don't have to interview again, but uh we're requesting that everyone be given the opportunity. Is that the way you're worried it's Scott or it's that?
Yes.
You require, yeah. Um yeah, I'm hearing the same thing. Anybody hear anything or or are asking for anything different? I don't think half the stuff we just heard we can ask. I mean, it's like asking ages. I just, but you know, um. I don't think we've had a problem where we've been off base on anything that I've heard from this council, so I think we'll handle it as as best and and. Nine times out of ten, people want to put it on their form. I mean, you can read it, so uh Christina, I'm asking at this point, have people? Have you already received the written?
Yes, so I have eleven applications from them.
Okay, so it's really just to uh offer them uh to get a time when we can all more or less get together or whatever. And then uh that'll go out email. And then at that time, it'll be like uh why I've got you all here is it the two questions like we've done before or the possibility? That Sabina brought up, which I like, is that round table thing, but um. We'll let you kind of feel it out, Christina. I I go ahead.
So I would like to get the direction from the council tonight, whether it's a candidate forum where it was a round table, one question each, and they get a time limit. Um or if it's individual interviews where it's a one on, you know, one one interviewee with five council members and you each could ask two questions. So.
Yeah, back to it. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
With 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 this larger group.
Yeah.
I think the forum. Would probably. Be in the best interest. And we each do two questions, so there's ten ten total questions for eleven candidates.
Okay.
And we do the forum thing.
Is that what you were thinking, Sabina?
Not quite. I got some feedback from people that it was a little exhausting as well.
Yeah.
So not not for us, but for the candidates themselves.
Ha.
So I don't know. Um Mark, you've done a forum style. What did you, what is your feedback about the forum?
I thought the process we had last time worked worked fine. Uh maybe what we do is consider one question, but.
Yeah.
Okay, with two questions, either way.
The last.
I don't mind if you want to do two questions and I'll skip mine.
The last candidate forum was set up where uh a council member asked one question, they got two minutes each. So it so it was quicker than uh, you know, two questions, so it did limit it. So it would take about two hours to go through that process.
Two hours for eleven people's not bad.
Individual interviews would be about three and a half hours.
Yeah. I'm suddenly liking this idea a lot better, guys.
Let's do.
Time data have worked for you.
Let's do the forum.
Yeah, I think we can, we can go with the forum and then. Ranking like.
Yeah, to me, the written is so much more important, so yeah, whatever it takes, but uh I think that works about the best if we can get everybody in there, Christina, whatever you think is best. Uh catered by salt and straw and we'll go from there.
Okay, so we're moving forward with a candidate forum, asking the eleven candidates, one question each for two minutes.
Yeah, if you guys feel up to it, you can take mine, whatever, we'll work it out, whatever it takes. Uh the primary idea is to get the candidate we think is best. Okay, Scott, you started to say something, I cut you off.
No, 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 you you're you're good, you're good. Let's do a candidate forum, eleven candidates, one question each. Uh allow them uh an opening statement and a and a short closing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like one minute opening and one minute closing.
Yeah. We're down to thirty seconds. All right, anything else? Um did have we given her direction? Mark, you've got to look like you're about ready to hit something. Go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, I I think we can look at uh potentially a a different question than what we asked last time and.
Yeah.
Up a little bit.
Yeah, it might be that you get to and you know, okay, we'll we'll figure out whatever it is. Uh between now and then, um I'll sit down with the.
I mean, again, this is not a test. It's, you know, how people feel about being on a commission and and, you know, so what's important and what are priorities, so.
Okay, now we got to get to the most important thing. We've given them direction. Let's cut to eleven. City manager comments. What do you?
We need a motion on this?
No. Uh not on this, I I haven't seen anything.
The direction's clear.
Yeah, directions.
Thank you.
Okay. What are we doing on August tenth or twenty fourth or what are we doing?
We are.
What comments do you have?
Uh I have very few comments given the time, but uh if you remember, we tried to discuss this last. Council meeting and we've uh determined that uh August tenth is the best uh meeting for uh staff to uh cancel. So if uh unless the council has any um objection to that, we'll cancel the August tenth.
I'm game for whatever one you want. Hey, guys, how did you feel on it? Scott, you're good. I see a thumb up. Mark?
We're good.
Okay, Shridhar says, okay, Sabina? I say they're all nuts. Let's go for the second one. Okay, it's uh it it's uh one to four and one wins. We cancel, no, we cancel the tenth. Okay, I have one person that wishes to speak to this, I hadn't even thought about it, but uh. Uh do you want to speak? Uh let's let her in and uh user, call in user one, you have comments on the discussion from the city manager? Or are you wanting to speak to public comment?
Yes, hi, um I have a question for the city manager. Would this cancellation uh? When the um meeting comes back up, when it re- res- resumes, will it throw off the cat, the current uh schedule where? The residents are able to participate uh in city council meetings and also the school district meetings without any conflict? In the past, because our city is, you know, sort of in a um. Collaboration with other uh municipalities, so it forces us to have to choose either one or the other. And I really, as a citizen and also as a parent, I I beg of you to please not create a conflict where I can only go to one or the other. When it resumes. Thank you.
Well, I can answer that if you don't want to. Government basically on all the committees that I'm on. It is considered dark in August. It's just like, okay, we. Get most of our uh vacations and. Things like that out of the way. The main reason why we had the discussion between the first meeting or the second meeting. Uh was that in the second meeting, I saw that there was a longer time to take off before you would have to deal with. I mean, for example, and I would, how many public hearings? Oh, two, but uh uh we've done this. Gosh, we've done it the last couple of years, but most of the committee C C T A has done it every year. I think three C T A's done it. Um I've been the air district so long, I'm not sure. It, this is a normal procedure. I don't even know if the school district is holding the uh. August meetings or uh the fire department, so this is actually a good thing in that you don't get caught up trying to. Mix different times in there. I think that's my own personal feeling. Anyone else? Have a comment? Uh uh you're the city manager, did I? I haven't forgotten, Joe.
Really quickly, this is simply a cancellation of a meeting, a meeting that we have. If we we don't have it, it's a cancellation. It doesn't conflict. It's always been that those times, and so there's really no, it's just we're cancelling this meeting, so. Um it wouldn't affect any other thing or or conflict with any other thing that. It doesn't already conflict with, so there's really no change other than we won't uh have this meeting.
Yeah. And last year we did the same thing. Okay, Ed, so you guys overrode me and uh just uh showed me the way it's gonna be the tenth, right? Told you, that's the one I really wanted you. Okay, public comment is open. Now's the time for anyone, the honors address this council on any item. Not on the agenda. If there's anybody left that wishes to speak on a public comment on something. That's not on the agenda, going once, twice, seeing no one, public comment is closed. Uh council member comments. Okay. Go ahead. You've got it, Scott, you're up first.
Okay, um not not a lot, but the I'm I'm. I was asked to be a member of the uh M C E. Ad hoc. Bond committee. Uh up to this point, M C E has uh not issued any bonds um to purchase. Uh any capital asset or any. to purchase any capital asset or any means of electrical production. But there has been in the past opportunities that would have served our ratepayers better, or at least better than the the current mechanism of what we call power purchase agreements. We'll buy three hundred megawatts at a time. And it you there are opportunities sometimes to, rather than buy the power, you buy the power provider. You buy a solar plant, you buy a a wind farm, you buy a storage facility or something like that. And so we have been going through the process. Now, the city issues COPs, which is, and then we also have a pension obligation bond. Much of this is the same. But in this case, the MCE would be purchasing. We would issue a bond and then use the proceeds to purchase some power production. And that would actually lower the cost of energy to our ratepayers in some cases, and that's that's what we're working on. The process is is a twelve to fourteen month process. And what we've been doing is going through all the preliminary activities so that we would have in place our bond council, our municipal advisor and all the other elements of our debt finance policy. And all those things would be in place so that we could react in about sixty days to an opportunity that presents itself. So I sit on that board that it would evaluate the bonds and and what we would what we would likely issue and what would be the purpose and what would be the value to the ratepayers. So I sit on that committee. It sounds it's it's as fun as it sounds, which probably isn't what Mark wants to sit on if I can't make it. It's way too much fun, but that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see anybody jumping out there. There she goes. Okay, Sabina, you're up first, then Mark, then Sridhar.
So one, it was good to see everybody at the groundbreaking for our public safety building. And that's, you know, we saw that in the budget, but obviously a lot of it is being funded by the San Ramon Valley Fire District. And I'm really excited about it, you know, they've already started working on it and hoping that that building will be coming up in a couple of years and it's going to really serve our residents. Well, our city council, our, sorry, our city manager gave some really good, gave a really good speech on how this will serve and save lives every day and serve our residents. And I really appreciate the partnership. So I think it's huge for San Ramon. That kind of funding doesn't just come easy. A lot of when I posted that, a lot of people commented about funding. And I said, yes, that's a partnership that we've been able to utilize to get the funding for the benefit of our residents here in San Ramon. So just want to say thank you to Joe and obviously the partnership with the fire department and PD. And we're really looking forward to it. I also want to thank Stephen for lighting up City Hall tonight. I'm getting pictures from some of the, it looks beautiful along with the proclamation that we're doing. So it always warms my heart when I see City Hall lit up with some lights. And sometimes I try to guess why it's lit up and sometimes it aligns with the marquee. So thank you so much, Stephen, for doing that. And third, LB Steakhouse is open and apparently you can't get, you know, you can't get a spot in there, which is good. Every forty dollar steak translates into revenue for our city. Just saying. But that's all. I think we really had a great meeting tonight. We passing the budget was a big deal because I couldn't wait on it. But really, you know, every year that we pass that budget, it's balanced. It is really, a lot of work goes into that. So we might be taking, you know, it seems like, you know, it was almost an anticlimax that we passed the budget, but it's taken a lot of work to get to where we did with everything else. And along with, you know, I wanted to again, say thank you for what we were able to do with our waste refuse fees and, you know, with our to give for lack of better words at this late at night for our trash contract and really not raise the rates on our residents and be able to pay it out of a fund. These are all the things, you know, are almost a wow factor for me sometimes when I think about how we're doing and managing some of these while still maintaining the quality of life for residents. So just want to say thank you again to Eva for managing this and doing such an amazing job. That's it. Nothing else to share.
Okay, Mark.
Just a couple of things. In addition to LB Steakhouse, there's another new business in San Ramon that's open. I attended a ribbon cutting ceremony last week for the veterinary emergency group. And this is a twenty four seven facility for pet emergencies. It was kind of a fun event. Sabina, you would have liked it. They had a they had a cat show and with cats doing magic tricks and things like that before the ribbon cutting. So.
Cat would have loved it.
I'm sure. One of the cats looked just like your cat. And I also enjoyed the EOC groundbreaking ceremony. It was nice to see people in in person. And then I know that's going to be a great facility, much needed for our city is going to go a long way to helping our residents. And then I had the opportunity to host the city update last Friday. I think that turned out well. We had PG&E that was present. They talked about the public safety power shut offs. We had representative from FEMA, we had Danielle Bell from the San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District, and then Captain Denton Carlson from our police department talking about disaster preparedness and wildfire safety and things that we can do practically to prepare prepare ourselves for when that next emergency occurs. And then yesterday I attended the senior advisory council meeting. One of the things they mentioned was that June is also Elder Abuse Month and we should be aware of that. They're going to conduct a revised needs assessment. So they reviewed some of the questions that they'll send out to some of the seniors on on what the seniors are looking for. And then they talked about a soft reopening for the senior center. It'll be coming up. They're starting to do some things there already, but there'll be more programs, classes, they'll open up the front desk, start up the senior transportation program, have recreation equipment available and and like, and I think that date is around the sixth of July. So good news for our seniors that they're going to be opening up the senior center soon for different programs and activities, and that's it.
Sridhar.
On May twenty sixth, we had a policy committee meeting. Two of the, there were three items we reviewed and the two of them we reviewed today already. So the one is about draft payment cut moratorium ordinance. The second one is about amending the San Ramon flood insurance program ordinance. So both of them we reviewed today. The one additionally is Wallinger Canyon Road fence and remainder parcels. Robin is going to go back and communicate with HWA on different options then going to come back to us on the recommendations. So that's those are the three items we reviewed. That's that's pretty much what I said.
Okay, and I'll cut mine down to I had a brief seven and a half hour meeting on Rule six point five for the refineries on stabilizing our climate by reducing particulate matter. The oddity of it is is that particulate matter isn't one of the six greenhouse gases that we're supposed to be reducing to eliminate climate change or stabilize it as the general plan. I think sometimes people don't realize how much the state's done. We were on our way to business as usual that would have had your carbon dioxide equivalents up in the five hundred and twenty seven million metric tons instead of getting down to the nineteen ninety level. That's about half of that. And I I just want to, because we never give you as much credit, Scott, when you get going on that MCE stuff. But I mean, green really breaks down if you're looking at climate change to two things. And that's the vehicle miles traveled and renewables. That's two thirds of it. And what we did when we approved the the project in Bishop Ranch for forty five hundred homes is a big step in that direction. So I I understand some people get a little excited about this because, I mean, I've only been excited about it for twelve, thirteen years on the air district board. But the strides that we're making in this state are far ahead of everyone else. But you have to do it statewide. Our numbers are statewide. And we'll continue to reduce and we'll continue to get better at it. We're under ten tons per capita right now and we're on our way to two and we'll see how fast we can get there. Outside of that, I've got a note here that says I need a motion to adjourn. So I move and I second and I vote it's five oh, we're adjourning. Night all. Thanks for a very good meeting.
Thank you.